Good afternoon, everyone. The September 9th, 2025 meeting of the Seattle City Council will come to order. It is 2:03. I'm Sarah Nelson, Council President. Will the Clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Kettle.
Here.
Councilmember Rink.
Present.
Councilmember Rivera.
Present.
Councilmember Saka.
Here.
Councilmember Solomon.
Here.
Councilmember Strauss.
Here.
Councilmember Juarez. Councilmember Juarez.
Here.
Thank you. And Council President Nelson.
Present.
Eight present.
Jody, just a quick second. I'm sorry, Councilmember Hollingsworth.
I'm present, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Nine present.
There we go. All right, thank you very much. Okay, Councilmember Strauss has a proclamation proclaiming October 9th, 2025, to be Christopher Williams' Day. Councilmember Strauss will share comments on the proclamation. Then I'll open the floor to comments from council members. After council member comments, we'll suspend the rules to present the proclamation to our guest and allow our guest to provide brief comments. Councilmember Strauss, you're recognized in order to address the proclamation.
Thank you, Council President. I see we have a packed chambers. Half are here for Christopher Williams and half are here for the conversations later in the agenda. If you will permit us, we'll have those conversations later. And first, I'd like to take a moment to celebrate a longtime steward of Seattle's Department of Parks and Recreation, Christopher Williams and Veronica, because I know it takes two to do every job. I don't have comments prepared, Christopher, and I'm going to just speak from the heart. Oh, I saw it. Which is, and for folks that may or may not know, Christopher, you've fixed so many problems in our city that nobody knew were problems. You've provided solutions before things broke. You were able to come in and say, you know what? We're going to change how we're doing the program to make sure that everyday Seattleites are served to the best of our abilities as the City of Seattle and the Department of Parks and Recreation. Department of Parks and Recreation not only responds to the executive and the City Council, they also have their own independent commission, their board. And it can create a lot of, whenever somebody has three bosses, it can be sometimes difficult to know which one is the one to listen to. And Christopher, you've always listened to the fourth boss, which is the people of the City of Seattle. You've come through to make solutions work. You've been able to cut red tape when it needs to be cut. You've been able to create a, I have to wonder, is it because the waterfront park is done that you're now leaving? We couldn't have that success without you. We couldn't have the successes throughout our city, whether it was Rainier Beach Community Center, whether it's the Lake City Community Center, whether it's the boathouse down at the Hydro Pits or the boathouse up at Green Lake. Your fingerprints are everywhere in this city. We couldn't have done this without you. I have worried for today for many years. And I'm also relieved because Andy has stepped up into the seat that I usually see you sitting in. Andy, you might have noticed, I haven't called you in a couple of months. I've called Andy every other week. And that succession planning doesn't always happen in departments and with departures of your scale, because I know that you've been asked to be the superintendent of the Parks Department many times over. You've always respectfully declined. And that's okay, because we know that true leadership does not require being in the CEO position. You've always been a leader by example. And while I can't always remember everything that you've said to me, I can always remember how you have made me feel, whether it was a staff member working for Councilmember Bagshaw who is here, or as an elected official trying to get things done for our city. So I'd say, Council President, if you want to call on other council members, I might crib a couple of words out of this proclamation, but I'll save it for once everyone else speaks.
Sure. Do any of my colleagues have any questions or comments? Councilmember Rivera. Oh, I am only, so far I see Councilmember Rivera, and then I'll go down the line.
Thank you, Council President. Christopher, as I said earlier, I can't even believe it. You might change your mind. I just want to thank you for your many, many years of service at the city. You've served in the superintendent interim role, as interim superintendent more than once, and always willingly and happy to do so. And the fact that I see a lot of colleagues here, both directors from other city departments and then many colleagues from parks here, is a testament to you and your collaboration and the hard work that you've always put into your role at the city. Always with a smile, always with grace, always collaborative. You have always returned my call, whether I was in the mayor's office or now in this role, without fail. And again, always with a smile and always ready to problem solve with me. And I just cannot underscore the service that you've provided to the city and how appreciative I am for that service. And I know I'm not alone in that gratitude and in that recognition. So I'm glad to see that this day has come for you and for your family. It's very well-earned, your retirement, and I really wish you a really amazing retirement. And I know that we'll see you around the city because you care that much about the city and you care that much about the parks in the city. So I know this is just a see-you-later, and I really just appreciate you so much for all the hard work that you've put in. And thank you to your partner and to your family for allowing you, all those years, to take the leadership role that you have at the city. So thank you.
Councilmember Juarez.
Thank you. It's really, Christopher, let me say two things first. As someone who left and came back, don't.
Come on. Deborah, it's not that bad.
So I just wanted to start with that. And I want to recognize, of course, that what Councilmember Strauss said, to recognize Councilmember Bagshaw, who chaired Parks, Waterfront before me, and then she handed it off to me and became my, I said, my plucky sidekick. She became my vice chair. Then I had four, six more years. And Christopher, you with Jesus, and then now Diaz. I don't even know where to start with the parks. You know, let me see, I have, I could go on. Okay, all the projects, community meetings, lawsuits, budget, NPD, zoo, waterfront, aquarium, pocket parks, off-leash dog. I mean, we could just go on and on and on and on. And you have always been there, even though we tried to make you the guy in charge, you always said, no, I'm going to stay right here. This is where I need to be. And now I know why. I just want to say, it's just, it's such a pleasure working with you. You're such, I don't think the public hears this enough, when there are public servants like you, and I've learned this in Indian country as well, I mean, those are the people that aren't going anywhere, that care. And I just remember a couple of times where I didn't know what I was doing, and you were sitting at the table and would quietly remind me, you need to move that, you need to second that, you're going to, I want to thank you. And I don't think people understand how hard people work in all these city departments to make this city work, just behind-the-scenes stuff. I know people come here and they're angry and they holler at us and call us names, okay. But then there's people like you that make this a reason why I would come back here. I just want to, and I want to thank your wife, because I know you put it with a lot, girl. I'm just saying, I know you did. See? So with that, thank you, thank you. And thank you, Councilmember Bagshaw. Councilmember Bagshaw, will you raise your hand? Please let people know you're here. There you are. There she is. Thank you. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Hollingsworth.
Thank you, Council President. I'll be super fast. Mr. Williams, Christopher, thank you so much for your service to our city. I've known you for a long time. You worked with my father at the Parks Department, and he always spoke very highly of you and all the, all the great things that you've done. Anytime I spoke with anyone in our community, they always talked about their great interaction with you, how you cared passionately about the park system. You're like a walking encyclopedia. You know parks in and out. I see your lovely wife shaking her head. You know the park system in and out, especially with not just the Parks Department, but the community groups that continue to keep our parks healthy and connected and that are advocating for them. And I think that is a big piece. And what our Parks Department does is making sure that we have great interaction with our community. And just really thank you for really setting the tone and the bar, and hopefully that you enjoy every piece of your retirement forward. So thank you.
Councilmember Kettle.
Thank you, Council President. Mr. Williams, thank you for your service to the city and thank you to your family, as noted. We all know that that's real. And I just wanted to say, I think it's important, so thank you, Councilmember Strauss, to celebrate those that have been in service to the city for such a long period of time and that service at such a high level for such a long time. So thank you for this opportunity to celebrate, Mr. Williams. And since we are a port maritime city, I'll just close by saying, fair winds and following seas to whatever lies next in your next chapter. Thank you. Thank you.
Looking to see if there's anybody else with their hand up. I'll just simply say, I'll miss you. You know, our parks are commons. It's, it's, you know, it's probably the most tangible and beloved symbol of our democracy. It's where we come together, it's where we go for solitude, and it's everything in between. And the stewardship of our parks says, says a great deal, if not the most, of our stewardship of our democracy, basically. And so I know that sounds grandiose, but it really is, our parks are a representation of, of our ability to deliver, to just perform local government for our constituents. It's delivering basic services, but it's also, it's also doing so in a way that improves people's lives and, and shows what we can be as a city together. So you leave a legacy, and thank you very much. I also hope that you write your memoir someday. Be interesting. Anyway, thank you very much. Councilmember Strauss.
Thank you, Council President. And a point of clarification, maybe this is for the Clerk. We have Councilmember Joy Hollingsworth here with us in open session. Can she sign, please?
I didn't, I couldn't hear the end of what you said.
Can Councilmember Hollingsworth sign the proclamation, since we are in open session?
Yes. Is that, are we allowed to do that? There's a technicality? Go ahead.
At this point, the protocol for it is the signatures are represented from those members who are present for that meeting and who signed on to it at that meeting.
We'll scribble Joy's name later.
Can I give a verbal signature? I verbally signed to the proclamation thing.
We'll put a post-it note on there. I'll just close with some final remarks, reading from the proclamation. I won't read every word of it. Christopher, you embody quiet power. You've served our nation, you've served our city. You come not looking for the spotlight or the soapbox or to say what is right and wrong. You come to say what will work for Seattleites. How do we get the job done? How do we get it done as quickly and as equitably as possible? It's just a sincere pleasure. So reading from this, having grown up in Seattle and as a graduate of Columbia University, a former United States Marine Corps officer and committed community leader, Christopher's professional achievements are matched by his personal integrity. He's been recognized by the Municipal League of King County's 2011 Public Employee of the Year and the recipient of the National Recreation and Parks Association Rose Award for his contributions and exceptional commitment to his field of profession. Christopher has served for more than 30 years here in the City of Seattle, and his steadfast commitment ensures Seattle's parks and open spaces thrive, and it has been instrumental in promoting the city's health, sustainability, and community service. You've served in a number of roles in the Parks and Recreation under five different mayors, including acting superintendent during three times. You've provided the department with the steady direction during challenging times, always stepping up to guide the team with professionalism and grace. And as deputy superintendent and chief of staff, Christopher managed the day-to-day operations of the Parks and Recreation System that is consistently ranked among the top 10 in the nation. AP never lets me forget that. Expertly overseeing over more than 1,000 employees, 10 swimming pools, 26 community centers, and the maintenance of 6,200 acres of parkland across the city, which include nearly 500 developed parks. We couldn't have this city's success without you. I'm sure that AP and Andy will continue that legacy while you're out fishing, and if you ever have any extra fish, you've got my number. With that, Council President, I would ask if we could all take a photo and to have Christopher's guests join us on this side of the barrier, if that would be all right?
Sure. I have to suspend the rules to present the proclamation to our guests and allow our guests to provide brief comments. So I see no objection to suspending the rules, and let's go forward. So the, hearing no objection, the council rules are suspended, the proclamation will now be presented, and after it's presented, Christopher can say a few words to us. All right, go ahead, please.
Wonderful. So if you are here for Christopher Williams, I would, and Council President, we're doing this a little bit on the fly, so tell me if I'm out of line. If you're here for Christopher Williams, if you want to come up to this front area, and then Christopher and Veronica, if you want to join the council members on this side of the dais. Does that work? On this side? Yep. Is that okay? There's a lot of mixing of. No? All right. Sorry, I just.
Just tell me what to do.
Yeah, just stand right here. We're all on this.
Top of your military service. Love it, love it. Thank you so much.
Tim's back there going, how am I going to work this? And everyone's going to double up, and we're just going to, as long as you can see Tim's camera, you're good to go. Oh, they are. Sally, come up here. Say that again. And then behind this group over here. It's like a wedding, okay? Everybody, ankle, slave ankle, wedding. Right from the heart, nothing prepared. This is for you.
I appreciate that. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Christopher.
I gotta, I gotta reach out and say, that's amazing.
All from the heart. You want to come back too?
Yeah, come on. Come on back, man. Come on. Yes, we do. I had to save it. Don't do it. Don't do it, girl. Don't come back. Thank you for doing that, because he's, I mean, he almost got assaulted when we were sitting at the table, he was sitting right there, and the guy came up behind and he tried to hit him. It was like somebody at my fifth meeting.
Okay, can I start? All right, well, I'd like to thank the council. You are all here, and just thank you for all of the kind remarks and the nice words. They are sincerely heartfelt, and I feel it right here. I also want to acknowledge that I've sat at that table many times, and just the abundant courtesy and respect that you offer to city staff whenever we come here and sit in front of you, I want to acknowledge that. That's something you may not hear a lot, but it means a lot for people like me and staff who work in the department. I want to acknowledge the team I work with. AP Diaz, our superintendent, Michelle Finnegan, Andy Schaefer, Desiree Tavarez, Daisy Kutek, Caitlin Seachow, Rachel Shulkin, and Alex Vaughn, who will be taking my place soon. Just a wonderful group of colleagues and professional people, and they keep it real. And what is special about this team is nobody is vying for recognition or to get notice. They work really well together in a collegial, professional way. I want to acknowledge a couple of tall seaters who are here. Holly Miller, who hired me way back when, and Ken Bounds is here. Ken? Yeah, there's Ken and Holly. And Kurt Green is also here. I think Kurt Green had his own proclamation day way back when. And I want to acknowledge some other special people here. Sally Bagshaw, Steve Boyd, Bob Davidson, my family, my lovely wife, my mother-in-law, who are here, and just with heartfelt gratitude and appreciation for everyone here, whose name I didn't call, but I love you, I appreciate you, and what we have shared together is just so much reciprocal respect and appreciation and really love for the public park and recreation system. And our pervasive commonality around the love of the park system has driven our relationship for more than 30 years, and that has held a special place in my heart. So thank you to the council, thank you to my colleagues, and thank you to the City of Seattle for the opportunity to work here for 30 years and provide for my family. It has been a transformational experience and transformational ride. Thank you very much.
After applause, there's supposed to be an encore. Just kidding. All right, everybody, thank you very much. Okay, moving on, colleagues, at this time, we will open the hybrid public comment period. Public comment is limited to items on today's agenda, the introduction and referral calendar, and the council work program. How many people do we have signed up to speak today?
We have 60 in person and 69 remote.
Okay, we'll do 10 in 10, please. Start with 10 in-person commenters.
Speakers will be called in the order in which they're registered. We will alternate between sets of in-person speakers and remote speakers. Speakers will hear a chime when 10 seconds are left of their time. Speakers' mics will be muted if they do not end their comments within the allotted time to allow us to call on the next speaker. We'll now begin with our in-person commenters.
Okay, we have the first 10 speakers. We have Yvette Dennis, and then Rachel Snell, Joe Gox, Alex Faer. If you can please start, thank you. Yvette and Rachel Snell.
Thank you, first of all, for the waterfront park. I went to the grand opening. It is just, just wonderful. I also want to thank you, I want to comment on yes to the cameras. I'd rather have them or not need them or need them or not have them. And then I don't have time today to speak on accountability, but I also have a small token of appreciation, which I gave to Amelia, and she'll give that to you once the meeting is over. That's all I have to say for now, because I only got one minute. Thank you.
Good evening, President Nelson and members of the City Council. My name is Rachel Snell. I, like many other Seattleites, am urging your vote no on SPD's piloted use of the surveillance program. Federal authorities currently use these tools and data they collect through ICE and Homeland Securities to surveil those who are immigrants and those seeking gender-affirming care and violate their rights to privacy and will, in fact, decrease public safety. Immigrant communities here in Seattle are already under facing attack. Families are being torn apart, and many of our neighbors don't feel safe going to school, work, the grocery store, without having to worry about being kidnapped or coming to an empty home. Instead of promoting another worthless piece of legislation like you guys get in the habit of doing and waste more tax dollars, why not take a stand for actual public safety and stand up for the communities of color and immigrant communities who truly make this city an amazing city to live in? And thank you, Councilmember Rink, for your tireless leadership. Thank you.
Please go ahead. Before you start, I want to note that I do, I was alerted that 45th, 43rd Legislative District Representative Sean Scott is in the, in the House, and so I didn't realize that when I was starting to call people. It's our tradition to offer electeds and former electeds the opportunity to speak. So if you would like, you can come up after this speaker. Thank you. Go ahead, please.
I've spoken at Seattle City Council meetings four times in the last year and a half regarding the use of amplified sound systems on the sidewalks surrounding T-Mobile Park. I've spoken to the Mariners, a city council member, two police captains, and a representative of the Seattle City Attorney's Office on numerous occasions. During that time, the problem has gotten worse. On Sunday of this past home stand, six individuals using loudspeakers were circling the ballpark as they blasted families waiting for a game with the highest sound levels I have ever recorded at T-Mobile Park. They were all over 110 decibels, and one was recording broadcasting at 121.7 decibels. And this was Little League Day. Four months ago, I was told the City Attorney's Office is looking to draft legislative, a legislative approach to fix the gaps in our current law. How many kids have to suffer a hearing loss for the rest of their lives before this can be solved? Thank you.
Okay. Go ahead and call the next speaker. But before you do, I just want to say that we will attempt to get through everybody who is here to speak today, so to, to make sure that we can keep things rolling, please jads, hands, and snaps are encouraged, but clapping, shouting, chanting, and other disruptive behavior, please, no thank you. Go ahead, call the next speaker.
We next have Alex Faer, then Nathan Wall, and then Elise Baudich, please.
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Alex Faer, and I'm speaking just for myself, but also for Seattle and Divisible as well. Wanted to address why we're considering expanding the surveillance right now. Middle of our pilot program and without the results in. The city's own process says evaluate first and then decide, yet the independent study won't be ready till 2026, 2027, yet you're proposing the expansion now. And I feel like that breaks the promise of a data-driven pilot in the first place. In addition, the civil rights risks are real. The CPC and the ACLU of Washington are both opposing this expansion, citing threats of data flowing through fusion centers to vendors and hostile actors, including immigration enforcement. And I just want to pause on that moment for a second, because regardless of your intentions, Seattle cannot guarantee how third parties or the federal government will use this data. ICE will gain access, just like they have Medicaid and the Department of Licensing. Please.
Hello. I'm here today, as we speak, federal agents in Chicago are preparing to roll out troops. Federal agents have invaded DC, and they've threatened to invade Seattle and Portland as well. While you guys say that this is something that you don't want to see, what are you doing about it? You're passing bills that make it easier for Donald Trump to get away with his constitutional abuses. This, police should have to get a warrant if they want to access this footage. It's simple as that. You don't have, they do not have the right to spy on everybody in this city. I went to Garfield High School, Councilmember Hollingsworth. I'm very proud of going to Garfield High School. Don't do this to our community. Councilmember Solomon, you've been in my house before. I am from District 2. You know me personally. I know that you're a good person, but this is not something that you can vote for. This is, this will harm my community. Councilmember Nelson's not going to win reelection, and Councilmember Saka, I don't even know what I want to say, so.
We have Elise, and the following Elise would be Arisa Samani, and then Carl Nass.
Okay, good afternoon, and I just want to point out, while everybody's in love with technology and toys and machines, that my experience with CCTV has been pretty useless. CCTV caught whoever stole my husband's bicycle in broad daylight in a Safeway parking lot. Yeah, we never saw the bike or the perpetrator ever again. When someone was having some problems and went through the alley and smashed over half a dozen windows in the cars that are parked in the alley, yeah, that was on CCTV. Big whoop. You know, we had to go to our insurance. Nobody ever caught the guy. Nobody ever really could do much. And just recently, again, on CCTV, we could watch as somebody broke into our recycle and trash and took great big defecation all over everything. And that is not...
So, I would just say, please, think about people and community.
Thank you.
Arisa?
My name is Arisa. I live in Capitol Hill, District 3. Surveillance does not prevent crime. Surveillance does not increase safety. Surveillance of this kind is too powerful and too unregulated to be in the hands of a police force that has demonstrated they can't even drive properly. This bill is a thinly veiled attempt for this body to double down on your failures. More money for more weapons. More money for more out-of-touch policing by out-of-state cops. And millions more for it all. The only thing that we need more of that we don't have is bold leaders. We are in a national, state, and city-wide fight to protect our neighbors. Do you want us to be ashamed to be yours? I yield my time.
We now have Carl, and then after Carl will be Lucas Moore, and then Tara Miller.
My name is Carl Nass. I'm a Seattle resident living in Ravenna.
Can you get closer to the mic?
I'm a Seattle resident living in Ravenna, and I strongly oppose the expansion of surveillance technology in Seattle. The data shows crime in Seattle is going down, yet somehow our councilmembers feel this is the time to sell out our privacy and human rights to corporations like Axon and Flock in the name of public safety. But how safe is that? These vendors regularly share data with ICE and other law enforcement entities beyond our state's jurisdiction. Council, if you vote yes, you will seriously endanger women seeking health care who come here from states where abortion is illegal. You will be aiding and abetting ICE. Surveillance vendors don't care about innocent people's privacy. They happily sell your data to the highest bidder, whether that's an advertising company or the state of Texas. They're in it for the money, not our safety. Council, what are you in it for? You can make the brave choice to protect our human rights, or you can be cowards and vote yes to prop up our mayor's failing reelection campaign by joining him and pretending to be tough on crime during an election year. I urge you all to vote no. Thank you.
We now have Lucas Moore, and then Tara.
The news of the Trump's administration overstepping is a Tuesday night for us. We see it over and over and over and over again. Sanctuary city Oakland, police have already funneled surveillance data into ICE, so why can't it happen here? Would this harm the safety of the American people if the SPD got ICE to... Oh, my God. There are two dogs here. There is SPD, which is already violent, and there is the Trump administration. And if you say yes to this bill, you are not only feeding the SPD, which is already violent, but you are feeding the Trump administration, who probably wants all of us dead in this room. Vote no.
We now have Tara, and then after Tara, we'll have Marina Ortiz, and then we'll go to remote speakers.
My name is Tara Miller. I'm in District 5, and I'm one of the Church Council of Greater Seattle's co-executive directors. We are deeply concerned about potential civil rights violations by expanding the city's real-time video surveillance, so we're asking you to delay its expansion. Our federal government is swiftly demonizing and attacking as many communities as it can, Black and Brown communities, LGBTQ+ communities, and migrant communities of which the Church Council is in accountable relationship. People are terrified for their safety, and as a queer and trans person, I am too. This is the time, more than ever, where our cities who claim to provide sanctuary must take that value seriously. It is our moral obligation in an immoral time. In the face of another budget deficit and federal cuts to community services, $1 million to further surveil our communities does not embody the city's value of care for our neighbors. Delay expanding the pilot program until it can be evaluated, conduct meaningful community engagement about the impact of this program, and invest in evidence-based community safety programs. Thank you.
Marina, who will have two minutes?
Muy buenas tardes, miembros del consejo. Voy a utilizar un intérprete para presentar mi testimonio, por lo que le pido un poquito más de tiempo.
Good afternoon, councilmembers. I am using an interpreter to share my testimony, so I am requesting additional time for this accommodation.
Soy organizadora comunitaria del Consejo de las Iglesias y resido en el Distrito Cinco. Les pido encarecidamente que rechacen la expansión apresurada del programa de videovigilancia. Esta expansión incumple el acuerdo de realizar la evaluación durante dos años y genera preocupación por el posible mal uso y las intenciones ocultas.
I am a community organizer with the Church Council, and I live in District 5. I urge you to reject the rushed expansion of the video surveillance program. Expanding it now ignores the agreed two-year evaluation and raises concerns about misuse and hidden intentions.
Este programa amenaza con causar daños irreparables mediante la discriminación racial que afecta desproporcionadamente a las comunidades negras, latinas, inmigrantes, y de bajos ingresos. Las consecuencias son reales y alarmantes. Creamos un entorno donde los padres tienen miedo de ir a trabajar, los niños dejan de ir a las escuelas, y cualquier persona puede ser objeto de vigilancia y discriminación y detenciones arbitrarias.
This program threatens irreparable harm through racial profiling that disproportionately targets Black, Brown, immigrant, and low-income communities. The consequences are real and frightening. We create an environment where parents are afraid to go to work, where children stop going to school, and where anyone is subject to scrutiny, profiling, and detention.
Nuestra ciudad tiene la oportunidad de marcar la diferencia y de demostrar que no vamos a sacrificar la libertad por la falsa sensación de seguridad. Les pido que propongan la expansión, realicen una consulta comunitaria real sobre el impacto que este programa y que inviertan en programas de seguridad comunitarias basados en evidencias.
Our city has a chance to lead differently and show that we will not compromise freedom for the illusion of security. I urge you to delay the expansion, conduct meaningful community engagement about this impact of this program, and invest in evidence-based community safety programs. Thank you.
We'll now move to remote speakers, and as a reminder to our remote speakers, to please press star six after you've heard the message that you have been unmuted. We'll begin with Red, followed by Alper Sarikaya and Shomaya Tripathi. Go ahead, Red.
Good afternoon, Seattle voters. Seattle calls itself a sanctuary city, but actions speak louder than labels. Recently, Washington's Department of Licensing was caught quietly sharing information with law enforcement, under meaning immigrant safety. Now with this bill, we are expanding surveillance cameras in neighborhoods where many vulnerable communities live and work. This isn't true sanctuary. It's performative sanctuary. Expanding surveillance aligns more with Project 2025 than with our city's values of privacy, safety, and inclusion. Our general election ballots will be arriving soon. Remember who voted for this bill and who stood against it. Seattle had the most police officers at the Capitol on January 6th. Public safety is not in the hands of immigrants. It's under threat from violent insurrectionists. Reject this bill, look at the data, and stop pretending otherwise.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Alper Sarikaya, followed by Shomaya Tripathi. Go ahead, Alper.
Hi, my name is Alper Sarikaya. I live in Wedgewood. I wanted to provide some comment against the adoption of Council Bill 121052. In my opinion, this is not a good time to be pushing this sort of legislation through. I've read multiple documents related to this bill, and I'm really struggling to see if the need to enact the bill is right now. A major point that I want to make here is that Seattle-owned ordinances related to surveillance require substantive evaluation to ensure that a pilot is warranted to become permanent. From the documents I was able to access, I'm not convinced. The Office of Civil Rights certainly isn't convinced that this investment is warranted and does provide strong substantive steps forward for needed policing that I think we should follow, backed by current research in criminology and other comments or notes that we have not even reached the two-year mark to evaluate the pilot. I urge the councils to table this bill until the community concerns are met. Or if this bill really feels a dismissal to all of us who speak up, I want to convey my heartfelt thanks to Christopher Williams for his service to the city. Bravo.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Shomaya Tripathi. Shomaya will be followed by Jill Friedberg, and then Ashley Nurbavich. Go ahead, Shomaya.
My name is Shomaya. I'm calling on behalf of Asian Counseling and Referral Service in D2 to urge council to vote against the proposed expansion. As a service provider to over 30,000 Asian native clients and Pacific Islander community members in our city, we very much understand the importance of public safety. But the expansion of this program does the opposite of protecting our immigrant and refugee communities. Expanding the data and information we collect on our city's residents through a cloud-based surveillance system creates an infrastructure and potential loophole for federal immigration enforcement to target communities our city has sworn to protect. It is naive and irresponsible to ignore that we are in a political environment where federal agencies are acting with complete impunity to access private data to carry out a mass deportation agenda. Without any research or evaluation on the efficacy of this pilot program, how can immigrants of this city believe a vote to expand this program is anything but an empty political gesture to address public safety at the cost of our protections? We urge you to vote against the expansion.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jill Friedberg, followed by Ashley Nurbavich. Go ahead, Jill.
Hi, I live a block from Garfield High School. The cameras that are already on the Garfield campus did not prevent the murder of Amar Murphy-Payne, nor has that footage helped apprehend his killer. But that's just anecdotal. There are ample statistical data indicating that surveillance cameras do not reduce crime. However, installing surveillance cameras does create the appearance that the city is doing something to so-called reduce crime, but the data tells us that this very expensive violation of privacy will not achieve those goals, and the city council knows it. At a time when the federal government is trampling human rights protections and threatening to wage war on so-called sanctuary cities, there is no true guarantee that the data and footage collected by these cameras won't end up in the wrong hands. The city should be protecting its citizens, not making them even more vulnerable. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Ashley Nurbavich, followed by Howard Gale, and then Catherine Dawson. Go ahead, Ashley.
Hi. Hi. I'm asking you to not extend SPD's use of CCTV cameras. I'm Ashley Nurbavich, and you're going to hear a lot of comments against this legislation today, and if you've walked into this chamber with your mind made up, I just ask that you open up a small crack in your certainty and consider our position. I know that those of you who are planning to vote yes for elected on a public safety platform, and I know you do want to do right by this community, and I'm just asking, look at the situation we're in and ask if it's really the same as we were two years ago. We're watching crime drop, we're watching homicides drop, and now the threats to our public safety come in the form of reductions to our civil liberties. Right now, a city government cannot guarantee anyone's safety from our federal government. You can only mitigate risk. And CCTV surveillance is an invasive and powerful and dangerous tool, and it will be used to kidnap and disappear members of our community. It will be used to prosecute people for seeking health care, and you could do something today and stand...
Thank you. Our next speaker is Howard Gale, followed by Catherine Dawson. Go ahead, Howard.
Good afternoon, Howard Gale. Over 156,000 Seattleites who are foreign-born are now under imminent threat in an America where Seattle is high on the list of cities that our federal government wants to go to war with. Those who, for a time, managed to escape kidnapping, detention, or deportation will still face the daily fear and trauma from simple routine acts like going to work, going shopping, taking their children to school, going to church, enjoying cultural or religious festivals, never knowing when or where they might be abducted. They and their loved ones will face life-altering traumas. The question is, in the coming years, do we want to end up like the Americans of the 1940s, who could only say, "We were good, we did not partake in sending folks to internment camps"? Or do we want to be able to say, "We did what we could to prevent, prevent folks from being taken"? Yet, under such dire circumstances, this council is shamefully considering legislation to increase video surveillance, further endangering tens of thousands of folks rather than considering legislation to protect...
Our next speaker is Catherine Dawson. Catherine will be followed by Katie Gendry and Flora Wright. Go ahead, Catherine.
Hi, I'm Catherine. I'm a renter in District 3, and I'm calling to voice my opposition to expanding surveillance. I live in Capitol Hill and previously lived in Central District, the primary area of new surveillance is being proposed. I'm opposed to this proposal because it expands the powers of Seattle Police Department and is more likely to further discrimination than it is to prevent harm. Personally, I don't want to live in a neighborhood that causes constant police surveillance, which feels especially urgent, as many people have noted, because we're in a time of heightened state violence, including ICE abductions and the military occupation of US cities. We've seen this in our own city recently as well, so we can't promise it won't happen with the anti-LGBTQ police violence in Cal Anderson when the neighborhood's affected, and the sharing of data through the Washington Department of Labor and Medicaid. We can't afford right now to put any more power or trust in the hands of the police state. I second the concerns that have been raised by the community, the ACLU, and the Office of Civil Rights, and I ask that you please vote no on expanding police video surveillance. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Katie Gendry, who will be followed by Flora Wright. Go ahead, Katie.
Hi, my name is Katie Gendry. I live in D6. For years, we've been telling you surveillance and policing do not keep us safe. They actually make us more unsafe and cause significant harm in our communities. Civil liberties groups have proved this, showing that Washington police have shared surveillance data from Flock license plate readers with the feds on the obscure SPD email list. We're in a political climate now where our civil liberties are actively being violated. We don't need your empty words or false promises or shallow values. We need you to take bold and brave action to challenge the status quo and white supremacy, and to hold firm in values of love for all people and of community care and support. Show us that you are not supportive of the Trump administration. Show us that you refuse to assist ICE in kidnapping our neighbors. Prove it by taking action now to protect our community members. Vote no on increased surveillance. We do not want more surveillance in our communities. No queremos más vigilancia en nuestras comunidades. Gracias.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Flora Wright. Flora will be followed by Michael Wilmarth, and then Aiden Carroll. Go ahead, Flora. You may need to... There you go.
Hello. Hello, I'm a resident of District 3, calling in to oppose the expansion of mass surveillance. More surveillance helps Trump target Seattle's LGBTQ and immigrant communities, abortion seekers, protesters, and everyone's right to privacy. Data from the King County Housing Authority's Flock ALPRs has been used hundreds of times to hunt immigrants and an abortion seeker from Texas despite a state shield law. Although Flock paused federal agencies' access to nationwide searches, they can still make direct requests through SPD's email server without public oversight. Meanwhile, the feds have taken control of DC's Fuses RTCC, the same company SPD uses. SPD has a history of abusing surveillance tools, spying on prisoners in 2020, and stalking former romantic partners. Last month, they used CCTV to racially profile and arrest an innocent man and jail him for a week. The only studies they cite in support of this tech concluded, quote, "No significant effects observed for violent crime." And Seattle officials clearly didn't do enough research into this tech, as they recently claimed they were duped by the Atlanta cop and Axon board member that sold them on Fuses. Don't ignore the recommendations of the Community Surveillance Working Group or the Seattle Office of Civil Rights, which both oppose this expansion. Listen to your constituents and vote no.
Our next speaker is Michael Wilmarth, and Michael will be followed by Aiden Carroll. Go ahead, Michael.
Good afternoon. My name's Michael Wilmarth. I'm a renter in D3, and I'm calling in to voice my strong opposition to the proposed expansion of SPD's surveillance capabilities. Criminalization doesn't make us safer, and it feels particularly myopic to implement additional surveillance technology when just yesterday, the Supreme Court ruled in favor of waiving Fourth Amendment protections for Los Angeles residents on the basis of racial profiling. This morning, the White House Press Secretary said that Trump would love to send armed troops into every Democrat-run city in the country. What do you think these tools will be used for and by whom? How do you think they'll be used in a year? Who exactly... Who exactly will any of this keep safe? Criminalization and surveillance of poor people, of black and brown folks, of immigrant communities, none of this does anything to improve safety or quality of life. I simply cannot wrap my head around thinking this is a good idea. If you truly care about the well-being of Seattleites, please vote no and start thinking about how you can leverage your position and your power to protect vulnerable people living in this city and fight back. Thank you.
Our last remote speaker for this group will be Aiden Carroll. Go ahead, Aiden.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
So, we need to repair the social fabric. The concept that a bitch in time saves nine is an old one, but it is the basic reality when we see that neither police nor surveillance can prevent or respond to crime. Now, this proposal was multi-wrong before Trump, but it seems to be extra obvious now. I would think we're necessary to point out, I moved up the list here because a bunch of people seemingly had to go back to work, and the stalling did not go unnoticed. You know, Andy Shaver led the attack on the BLM garden, and I'm sure that AP and Chris have been very involved in the attack on homelessness in the last decade. The thousands of dead homeless are the coach...
Okay, we'll move back into in-person speakers. We have P. Caleb, and then we have Charlotte Philippi, and then Courtney DeRuen.
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Pastor Caleb. I'm a local United Methodist pastor here in King County, and I'm here as a representative of some of my fellow faith leaders in migrant communities. As a pastor, I've had the privilege of walking alongside and providing pastoral care for migrant communities throughout King County. These communities are already deeply fearful about the risk of being detained and denied due process as they go through the grocery store, as they walk their children to school, as they go to work, or even go to church. How much more fearful will they be knowing that there's increased surveillance throughout Seattle that could be used to target them and their families? As a pastor and as a person of faith, I take very seriously Seattle's value of providing sanctuary, and I urge you to also take this value seriously by delaying the surveillance pilot program until it can be properly evaluated and conduct meaningful community engagement with migrant communities about the impact of this program. Thank you for your time.
After Charlotte, we have Courtney.
Okay, so I just want to tell a story about, you know, like in Orange County, the Home Depot cameras, they're, you know, being used to help ICE. And I think that what we're seeing in our country right now is we're seeing local law officers colluding with ICE, who, like the caller said, is profiling people. Even though the Supreme Court did not support the lower court ruling, we know that it's not right, and we still have to do the right thing. We're a sanctuary city, and we have to have a stance of non-cooperation. Why are we making easier... Why are we making things easier for people that we know want to hurt our community? I think that we want to get ready for being invaded by the national government.
We now have Courtney. After Courtney will be Emmy Koyana or Kayama.
Madam Council President, members of the council, my name is Charlotte Philippe. I'm a resident of District 3, and I'm on the 43rd Board of Directors for the 43rd LD Dems, speaking in my personal capacity today. I'm opposing the expansion of the closed-circuit television and the Real-Time Crime Center. The scale of the expansion is concerning. I agree with most of my fellow public commentators here today. We see that the federal government is ignoring the laws in, on ink and paper. I don't trust them to not scrape the data. I don't trust them to interfere with the data collection. Seattle's already on the watch list for the federal government. Again, why are we making it easier? You know... To the Bob Caucus, Bob Kettle, Bob Saka, you are both military intelligence officers. You know what they were capable of then, who knows what they're capable of now? Why are you doing this to us? Count how many people who are here opposing this, and now count how many people are here opposing this or supporting this. Done already?
Thank you.
Oh, no.
Emmy? Emmy? Yeah, following Emmy will be Geoff Kroll.
Hello, this is Emmy Koyama, representing Collin Street Rights and Safety and a former member of the Community Task Force and Criminal Legal System realignment that was tasked to make a recommendation to City Council. One of the recommendations we made about four years ago was to use extreme caution on the use of surveillance technology and algorithmic decision-making that are known to have disparate negative impact on communities of color and other marginalized communities, contrary to the recommendations sought by the council and for which we spent a whole year deliberating in earnest. This council seemed to be rushing toward a further expansion of criminalization tech without even investigating its efficacy or harms. And at the very moment, the federal forces are threatened to step in and override local laws and policies protecting immigrants and other members of our community. So the stake cannot be higher, and I ask the council to wait on the surveillance bills at least until studies have been conducted for the present council's existing pilot and until the courts sort out limits of federal executive power and local...
Now have Geoff Kroll and then David Montoya. And then, and then it's, and then David Montoya. Then Nicole, I can't remember the last name, starts with a B.
Hi, can you hear me? All right. Hi there, my name is Geoff. I continuously come to these things to hopefully speak to you about what I feel is important to the city. I've lived in the Central District and I've spent a lot of time in CID. Yeah, there's a lot of going on, there's a lot of busyness, but I, yeah, living in the Central District, like specifically, the most crime I see is like people speeding down 23rd, and I don't think you're going to catch anything on camera. It's, it's, it just seems so backwards to install cameras in what otherwise is a pretty peaceful residential area. I think there's a street camera right outside my HUD subsidized housing that pretty much just looks in my window. I can actually see the same things it's seeing, and I haven't seen a single thing that's concerning. What I am concerned about is the amount of homeless people that are going to be rolled up into this and put in, on a straight path to the prison system. Like, that's what I'm...
And David, then it's Nicole, I believe it's maybe Beech, Botch? I'm guessing for mispronouncing, and then BJ last.
My name's David, and I'm asking you to oppose this surveillance proposal. Firstly, thank you to Councilmember Rink for having the Office of Civil Rights demonstrate to your fellow council members how damaging forcing this through would be. It should give pause to any council members claiming to care about the well-being of the city's citizens. A fascist authoritarian is currently weaponizing a police and surveillance state that was created by both political parties and that this council is trying to push through a sort of Diet MAGA proposal. ICE agents have already shown an ability to sidestep sanctuary city protections, and Washington agencies like the Department of Licensing have already collaborated with ICE. ICE is already abducting our neighbors, and these assaults will only intensify as fascism becomes more entrenched due to bodies like this failing to meet the moment. As the ACLU and many organizations and speakers have pointed out, surveillance does not reduce crime. You are stripping people of their rights to privacy. This will disproportionately affect my neighbors. I see my unhoused neighbors suffer daily. The city has failed to both listen to and address their needs. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nicole?
Thank you.
After Nicole, it'll be BJ Last and then Milani.
Good afternoon, my name is Nicole Beach. Councilperson Nelson, earlier you said, "Our parks are our commons. It's where we go for solitude." Well, I go to them for community, specifically Denny Blaine Park. Today's vote directly impacts, as you said, what we can be as a city together. A Chicagoan at heart, I moved to Seattle 11 years ago. I've never been to City Hall until yesterday, and now again today, to carry a message to you, our message: Seattle has a P problem. People pointing private cameras at public places pressuring peaceful parkgoers to part from previously safe spaces. I've seen firsthand the effect of constant cameras that they can have on community. I've heard how Seattle Park users feel less welcome in their favorite place to commune. I've talked to the ice cream vendors, whose sales are down due to less pedestrians. Today's vote will not reflect on you lightly. Will you align yourself publicly with a fascist regime sweeping our nation? Or will you align Seattle with other international cities investing in uplifting the very communities this vote would harm? Today, vote no, and you will create a good public, and you will be a little bit of a little bit of a...
Thank you.
BJ Last? And then after BJ will be Milani, and then we'll go back into remote speakers.
My name is BJ Last. I'm here speaking against the expansion of CCTV and the RTCC. I want to make one thing clear first: We need to clear up the amount of time. Councilmembers keep saying that CCTV footage is only stored for five days. That is grossly incorrect. The lawsuit allows it to be stored for 30 days. Claiming it is five is misleading the public. If you want it to be five, you can amend the bill today to change it to five. Otherwise, stop misleading the public. Next, people have talked about this data getting used by ICE and immigration enforcement. We know that. SPD has already been working with ICE. They attacked people who were trying to prevent ICE from kidnapping someone to make sure ICE could. Amendment A even specifies that Seattle works with the federal immigration authorities on criminal matters. We know how this plays out. ICE just asked for information, swearing it's something criminal, and SPD hands it over to them. There's nothing guarding against that happening. Surveillance isn't safety. We have over 20 years of studies, and if it was, this would be going in Ballard, Wallingford, Queen Anne, not the CID.
Our next three remote speakers will be...
Jody, sorry, we have one more speaker, and then we'll go into remote speakers. Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Hi, my name is Milani, and I'm a resident, worker, and historian in the Chinatown International District. I oppose the expansion of the surveillance network. You put 20 cameras on nearly every intersection in the CID. People can't enter or leave the neighborhood without being surveilled. You did this to a poor immigrant community that remembers the racist surveillance of the 20th century, when the government surveilled Japanese-Americans before sending them to concentration camps, and the cops had books of Chinese mugshots to profile and justify police violence. Surveillance and policing does not make my community safe. In fact, you are actively putting us in harm's way. Because the CCTV data is not stored in Washington, our immigrant community is being put at risk of ICE. The surveillance expansion rolls out the red carpet for ICE to kidnap our families, friends, and neighbors. Do we not deserve safety? Please do not expand the surveillance network today or ever.
Thank you. Our next three remote speakers will be Hamza Kaiser...
Hold on, can I just, just a reminder to please jazz hands snaps in between speakers, but we do have a lot of people signed up, and we want to make sure that everybody has a chance to speak and that we proceed in a, in a way that respects everybody's time and comment. Thank you. Go ahead, Jody.
Yes, and I'll remind the remote speakers to press star six when you hear your message. Our next three remote speakers are Hamza Kaiser, Allegra Silcox, and Hannah Jones. Go ahead, Hamza.
Hi, my name is Hamza Kaiser. I'm a citizen and resident of District 3, represented by Councilmember Hollingsworth, and I'm calling to oppose the expansion of CCTV and the use of cloud-based real-time crime center software. These proposals are not only ineffective, they are also shockingly ill-timed. We already live under a surveillance state where people who were policing other states have access to our traffic damage and have already used it to track people seeking abortion access. ICE is already using tools like this to find and track people they want to deport. This is not some hypothetical potential misuse of these tools. It is happening now, today, and expanding the surveillance network that allows ICE's Dragnet to function and putting any of that data in a cloud service is the last thing we should be considering. We should instead be restricting the use of technologies like this so the federal government and other states cannot use them against vulnerable people, and we should be making the data we already store less easily accessible. You have a responsibility and an opportunity to protect our privacy as well as our safety in this moment. That is what it would look like to rise to the occasion. And I want to stress that most of people here, like most of the people here, that right now the most significant threat we face is that sanctuary city is from the federal government.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Allegra Silcox, followed by Hannah Jones. Go ahead, Allegra.
My name is Allegra Silcox. I'm a new resident of Seattle District 7, and I vehemently oppose the council bills aiming to expand surveillance of Seattle. You don't know who I am, though, so let's consider who else opposes this and has urged the council to halt the pilot program. In the city, the Office of Civil Rights, whose report has said, "Research has not demonstrated that surveillance technologies reduce persistent felony and violent crimes." The Community Surveillance Working Group, whose Surveillance Impact Report logged 12 key concerns with these bills, the Seattle Winters Commission, and the Community Police Commission, whose letter states that the community members are overwhelmingly against expansion with immediate concerns of the growing risk of actors outside the city, like ICE, misusing surveillance information. The city is breaching its commitment to scrutinize the surveillance, whether it works and its impact on civil rights during a two-year pilot before continuation or expansion. In addition, over 60 community groups oppose, including the ACLU of Washington, who adds that the city council has rushed this decision. Please...
Thank you. Our next speaker is Hannah Jones, who will be followed by Nico Bukaro and then Ashley Ford. Go ahead, Hannah. Hannah, have you pressed star six, please?
Interesting question.
Okay, we're going to move on to Nico Bukaro, who will be followed by Ashley Ford. Go ahead, Nico. Okay, let's move on to Ashley Ford, followed by Stephanie Valardi. Go ahead, Ashley Ford.
Hello, City Council, this is Ashley Ford, co-chair of the Seattle LGBTQ Commission and Development Director of the Washington Bus. Earlier this year, most of you took quick action to sign on to an ordinance declaring Seattle to be a welcoming city for two S-LGBTQIA people and affirming our right to gender-affirming care. So we know that the Trump administration is coming for queer people. You all know that the Trump administration is coming for Seattle, yet we're taking steps to collect information that's going to put us in harm's way, something that's not at all welcoming. I really need you all to understand that queer, that to queer and immigrant communities, this additional surveillance isn't public safety. This is data collection that is going to be weaponized against us if the federal administration keeps heading in the direction it is, and we know that it probably will. You can say that Washington has laws in place that protect us from this, but the fact is, we know these laws don't protect us as much as we once thought. Please don't do the Trump administration's job for them. Please protect our civil rights to delay this expansion. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Stephanie Valardi, followed by Edith Evergreen and then Scott Sternberg. Go ahead, Stephanie.
Hi, my name is Stephanie Valardi, and I work at Perinatal Support Washington, where we support families navigating the challenges of new parenthood. I also work for Q Law Foundation, a nonprofit that promotes the dignity and respect of LGBTQ+ Washingtonians within the legal system. We stand in strong opposition to any expansion of the surveillance in our city. The families we support are already facing extraordinary pressures. Many are afraid to leave their homes, not because they're doing anything wrong, but because they live in a society that too often punishes vulnerability. Increasing surveillance doesn't make them feel safer, it makes them more visible to punitive systems that are more likely to separate families than support them. Postpartum mental health struggles are not criminal. Poverty is not criminal. Struggling to survive in a system that doesn't support you is not criminal, but surveillance reinforces those narratives. It increases fear and deters people from accessing care and deepens the trauma that they are already trying to hear from, heal from. We cannot be complicit in building systems that monitor rather than nurture and that punish...
Our next speaker is Edith Evergreen, who will be followed by Scott Sternberg. Go ahead, Edith. Edith, you may need to press star six. Okay, we're going to move on to... Oh, go ahead, Edith. There, I see you.
Okay. Um...
Okay. Um, I've lived in Seattle for over 50 years, and I strongly urge the council to vote no on the expansion of surveillance cameras. I believe they are a violation of American citizens' right to privacy. The creeping nature of surveillance smacks of constant and vigilant observation of law-abiding citizens with no future understanding of how the videos would be used. I have been told that there is a budget deficit, and programs for those in need have been cut. I don't see how the city council can justify the funds necessary for this project. The data does not support... The examples given by the Seattle Police Department do not justify the use of surveillance cameras on law-abiding citizens.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Scott Sternberg. Scott will be followed by Jessica Castellanos, and then Liz Walters. Go ahead, Scott. Scott, please press star six. Hello.
I vehemently oppose the proposed expansion of surveillance and ask each of the council members to reject this proposed expansion. My name is Scott Sternberg of Beacon Hill. I'm a public health researcher and a family therapist. So I bring that background to my stance here. Surveillance is a tool of social oppression and state violence. Surveillance is used to criminalize communities, particularly marginalized communities, and create precepts to arrest, incarcerate, deport, kidnap, and disappear people. These dangers were highlighted by many in public comments previously when the pilot project using these tools was first proposed. However, you, the council, ignored it and voted to approve the pilot. Now you propose to expand surveillance. I ask that you again vote no. The research demonstrates over and over that CCTV does not make...
Our next speaker is Jessica Castellanos, followed by Liz Walters, and then Cody D. Go ahead, Jessica.
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Jessica Castellanos, and I'm speaking as a Seattle District 2 resident and as Managing Director of Kids Need to Defend, both women as kind, which provides direct legal services to unaccompanied children in use in our city. I urge you to vote no on extending the surveillance pilot. Extending just three months in without evaluation is premature and dangerous. This is not hypothetical. Just last weekend, the federal government tried to unlawfully deport Guatemalan children in federal custody and warned of more involuntary repatriations possibly impacting children in Washington. Seattle's contract with Axon only increases these risks. Without safeguards, sensitive data is vulnerable. Seattle must live up to its values as a welcoming city. Please pause this expansion and protect our most vulnerable residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Liz Walters, who will be followed by Cody D., and then Karen Chapin. Go ahead, Liz.
Hello, my name is Liz Walters, asking the council to reject the proposed CCTV expansion. I speak today for my experience as a case manager for homeless youth in King County, as well as a longtime Capitol Hill and Central District resident. While I think there are hidden, dangerous intentions that SPD and the federal government hope to use the surveillance for, I nonetheless want to state that expanding surveillance would be a grave misuse of vital financial resources that could instead be used to actually prevent the crime that the surveillance is said to address. Surveillance doesn't stop crime. Surveillance does not prevent crime. What prevents crime is ending poverty, hunger, homelessness, and various forms of societal neglect. The advent of this mass expansion of surveillance in our city will only fuel our city's ongoing legacy of hyperpolicing poor people and people of color. Again, this will not stop crime. We know what stops crime. Each and every one of you knows what stops crime. Feed people, help people, give people jobs, give people Medicaid, expand public transit and make it free. Give people something to do with their time. Give children and teens something to do...
Thank you. Our next speaker is Cody D., followed by our last remote speaker in this group, Karen Chapin. Go ahead, Cody.
Hello, my name is Cody. I'm a local resident and citizen, and I am deeply concerned about the proposed increase in surveillance technology and how it will deeply negatively impact our community. I am asking that we do not expand city surveillance technology and systems and instead invest in more important and more effective programs for the betterment of the city. Many people in Seattle, despite their own best efforts and the efforts of their neighbors, are still lacking adequate shelter, food, medical care, and other essential basic needs. This city would be investing inefficiently in their community by putting more resources into surveillance while people still suffer, while they live without what they need to survive and thrive and even die. Studies have shown that increased surveillance does not actually decrease violent crime, although it would make vulnerable populations even more vulnerable to exploitation and harm by those who would have easier illegitimate access or usage of this information with these proposed changes. Thank you.
Thank you. Our last remote speaker for this group is Karen Chapin. Go ahead, Karen, and please press star six.
Hello, my name is Karen Chapin, and I also oppose the additional CCTV surveillance. I am anxious, and so my words might come out a little bit garbled, but I would urge you to reflect on how this call and this meeting has gone so far. I don't believe that anyone has been in approval for this so far, so I would really urge you to listen to your constituents and the people that are in your community right now. Thank you.
Okay, we'll go back into in-person speakers. We're going to start with Sue Kay, Joan Fox, and then Crowe Delavan.
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Sue Kay. I'm 80 years in Seattle now, just had my birthday, and I'm here representing the CID community. I'm a member of the CID Coalition, also known as Humba's Not Hotels. Maybe we need to say Humba's Not Surveillance. But I just want to say again that our community goes way back. We've had a lot of destruction, and now is not the time to put in surveillance cameras. We have a lot of other pressing needs. We need housing, and like many people have said, let's make this an amazing Seattle. I've grown up here for 80 years and graduated from Garfield and the U of W. It's not just the CID, but all of Seattle. Let's cancel the surveillance. This is stupid.
You have Joan, and then Crowe.
Hi, thank you for hearing our comments, Seattle City Council. I'm Joan, and I'm going to speak in my personal capacity as a trans person. Right now, we have seen the Trump Department of Justice label my community as mentally defective as a way of trying to take away our rights. As somebody who works directly with trans refugees who fled to this city because of the persecution they faced by our federal government and in cities across this country and states across this country, this expansion of surveillance would directly put them at risk. Right now, I have held them in my arms as they've cried, as they've felt scared. Councilmember Kettle, I know you're trying to keep people safer, but this is not the way to do it. This will put my community at risk. It will put the most vulnerable members of our city in harms way. I know that's not your intention, and I know you have a chance to change your mind. Thank you.
We now have Crowe, and then after Crowe will be Britt Lampert, and then Dan House.
Hello, my name is Crowe Delavan, and I am a resident of District 4. And I am here today to urge you to vote no to expand the surveillance of SPD's CCTV cameras. ICE can and will gain access to this surveillance, and after the recent Supreme Court ruling, will use the CCTV footage for more racial profiling and racial targeting of our most vulnerable populations. Seattle is known across the country as a sanctuary city for immigrants and for those seeking reproductive care, for those seeking gender-affirming care, and approving this expansion would put all of these communities in harms way, and I'm urging you to vote against it. Thank you.
So we have Britt, and then Dan House, and then Chris Littlehouse.
Hi, council members. I'm Britt Lampert. I just moved back to Central District a few weeks ago after spending two years in DC where I worked for the White House in, under both Biden and Trump administrations. And I'm not against surveillance in general all the time. You know, I worked in national security. I understand that sometimes it is needed, but I do not trust the Trump administration to not go after this data. And I don't think that we should pursue it until there is, you know, more information about how you're going to protect Seattle from the federal government when they do come after us. So, thank you very much for your time.
Hi, my name is Dan House. I live in District 5, and I work in District 6. And expanding video surveillance will not make this city safer. On my way here today, I was waiting for the bus, and as happens sometimes in this city, I was accosted by one of my unhoused neighbors who was experiencing addiction. It was upsetting, and it made me feel unsafe. However, I know that expanding video surveillance would not prevent incidents like this. What will prevent that is spending our limited resources on housing, on addiction treatment, on mental health treatment, and expanding video surveillance will make this city less safe. It will make all of us less safe, especially our immigrant neighbors, our unhoused neighbors, and our trans neighbors, and people seeking reproductive health. So I urge you, in the strongest possible terms, to vote no on these bills. Thank you.
We now have Chris Littlehouse, and then Bill Clifford, and then Caroline Mueller.
Hello, my name is Chris Rojas. I have worked in the field of computer vision for the last 15 years. As an expert in the field of computer vision, I'm here to warn you that it is especially dangerous at this point in history to turn Seattle into a mass surveillance state with the additional proposed CCTV cameras. The technology used to be able to track the movement of everyone and to be able to roll that back in time to determine where anyone has been for the last however long was developed and tested as a tool of war in Iraq. And what did they do with that technology after it was done, if they were done with the war? They brought it to US cities in 2016 until the ACLU told the police to stop using it. Does Seattle, a liberal stronghold who has routinely stood up to Trump, want to install a tool of war against its people? A mass surveillance system that can be used, that can be taken over by the federal government to target anyone, like the governor, the mayor, this city council, you? Do not install...
We have Bill Clifford, and then Caroline Mueller. Is Bill here? Bill Clifford? And then Caroline Mueller, and then Garrett Johnson.
And could people please line up or be ready to speak as soon as the person in front of you is done?
It's really hard to hear the names out there. Yeah.
Oh, okay. Thank you for letting us know. Can you talk louder or turn your mic up? Thank you.
I sent you my comments this morning by email, so I'm not going to go over them again. I think I made some good points about the environmental impact of artificial intelligence that's going to be used in this. It goes against the decarbonization goals of Seattle. But I want to talk about two things that happened personally to me. I moved into the Garfield Nova target area in 1979. I know kids have been shot. I know kids have done the shooting. I also worked in youth diversion for a while, and I can tell you, all those kids would testify that a camera doesn't stop an angry, scared, or alienated kid with a gun and a poor impulse control from shooting somebody. That's just the way it goes. I also drove for Metro for 36 years. After Mark McLaughlin was shot in 1998, we got video cameras on the bus with the promise they'd never use them for discipline. Our current newsletter says they're pulling video 6,000 times a year for minor complaints.
Okay, please call the next four people, and quiet in-between people speaking would help you understand and hear the names she's calling, so we need to pick up the pace of this a little bit by shortening the timing between speakers.
The last three speakers in this set are Caroline Mueller, Garrett Johnson, and Elena Carolina Mueller, Garrett Johnson, Elena Eriakaki.
All right. Hi, City Council. I'm a resident of District 2. I'm Mark Solomon. I come to you today as a member of our community who's deeply concerned about the expansion of CCTV. See, I'm a scientist by trade. When it comes to planning out experiments, I use known data. I start my studies and prioritize my energy in areas that have shown statistically to have the highest likelihood of success. A 2019 study of CCTV by J. John College of Criminal Justice collated all CCT data from the 40 years prior and organized changes in crime into the following five categories: Disorder, which includes addictions and mental health, drug trafficking, property damage, vehicle damage, and violent crime. In their conclusion, CCTV only significantly reduced property and vehicle damage. With disorder and violent crime reduction, we're not even close to a P-value of .05 significance. Therefore, I believe CCTV has the ability to monitor property, but it will not change our culture to protect the people of Seattle. I encourage you to look at what Chicago is doing and follow their lead. Thank you for your time.
My name is Garrett. I live in District 3. I feel like this is a lazy way of handling crime. I oppose the real-time crime center because there are better, improved alternatives to prevent crime than mass surveillance. For example, Denver's STAR program sends mental health professionals to nonviolent 911 calls, reducing levels to 35% in the first year. Seattle's own lead program diverts people from jails and services, which we could also fund using the money from this program. Oakland's Violence Interruption Team has reduced shootings by more than 50% over several years. And crime prevention through environmental design, I am a planner, so I know that proper lighting and design can help reduce crime other than surveilling people in their bathrooms. These strategies cost less, build trust, and address root causes. Thank you. Oh, I just vote no.
Our last speaker is Elena, and then we'll go into remote speakers.
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Elena, and I here representing Friends of Little Saigon. We oppose increased surveillance technology in Seattle because of the risks it poses to our immigrant and refugee communities. We're seeing truly frightening threats to immigrant community's safety. Just yesterday, the US Supreme Court gave permission for ICE to conduct raids in LA based on racial profiling. Raids have been getting more violent and rampant across the country. The federal government has been using surveillance technology to aid in deportation efforts, and we can't risk Seattle data being used for this purpose. Research shows CCTV cameras do not reduce violent crime or make our communities safer. Instead, we must invest in community-centered solutions to public safety threats, such as supporting our neighbors who are experiencing the greatest need, which will raise the overall quality of life for all Seattle residents. We ask that the city delay the expansion of their surveillance pilot and do community engagement with immigrant, refugee, and other communities about the unintended impacts of increased surveillance before any action is taken. We urge you to oppose expanding surveillance in our city and instead invest in solutions that address the root causes of crime. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next three remote speakers are Noel Rivard, followed by Julia Buck, and then AVO. Go ahead, Noel.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. I'm Noel, and I'm a resident of District 2, and I'm here to vehemently reject the bill that we're here talking about. I'm a little upset that I have to be rushed through this because this is a very rushed decision on your part, and it's clear to me that we're rushing to get out of the door when 120 constituents are here vehemently opposing this with data and backed up by what the people actually want and need. So I urge you to stand with the people. We are all the people here with People's Movements for Justice and Lasting Peace. I don't know if it's been made aware to everyone yet, but our federal government is now called the Department of War, and that will be against us if we move in this direction.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Julia Buck, who will be followed by AVO, and then Lois Martin. Go ahead, Julia.
Hello, my name is Julia Buck, and I'm a resident of District 6 in Seattle.
Hello, my name is Julia Buck, and I'm a resident of District 6 in Seattle. Since I last spoke about the surveillance in the city council meeting, Seattle officials managed to become a national embarrassment because they were quote-unquote duped by Marshall Freeman, who was introduced as a member of the Atlanta Police Department, but actually was a board member of FUSIS Board, the RTCC provider. In addition, the federal government has taken control of DC's FUSIS system and is using it to impose martial law and invade a US city. Meanwhile, our own Mike Solin, the president of SPOG, is praising Trump's takeover of DC and posing with Tom Homan. This expansion is Vichy garbage. I urge you to reject it.
Thank you. Our next speaker is AVO, followed by Lois Martin, and then T. Sanon. Go ahead, AV.
My name's AV. I live in District 7. And honestly, I'm just appalled that this technology is even being marketed to me as something that's going to make our city safer. Moving increased surveillance will turn Seattle into an even stronger surveillance state that seeks out, tracks, and punishes people of color, immigrants, and how CLGBT community. I could go on. Expanding surveillance will do nothing but harm marginalized communities. And I'm deeply concerned that this technology is going to be used to coordinate with ICE and other federal agencies to brutally disappear people, as we've already seen. I would be dumb to believe that this technology would be used to protect anyone except the wealthy, white, and conservative, which is a group of people who want nothing more than to stamp out any semblance of difference or diversity. For these reasons, and for so many more I can't name right now due to time, I'm urging you to please vote no on implementing additional surveillance technology. Thanks.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Lois Martin, who will be followed by T. Sanon, and then Olivia Green. Go ahead, Lois.
Good afternoon, council members. Nearly every major international city, London, Paris, Tokyo, Sydney, New York, relies on cameras to discourage crime, provide evidence in emergencies, and protect residents. Seattle deserves the same tools to keep our communities safe. But we must pair this expansion with safeguards. If the federal government, including ICE, infuses these systems for immigration enforcement or community surveillance, the city must shut down access immediately. Cameras should never be weaponized against immigrant, BIPOC vulnerable communities. With strong oversight, equity in placement, transparency in operation, and a firewall against federal misuse, Seattle can strengthen safety while upholding its values of inclusion and protection. Please move this measure forward with the amendment to ensure these cameras serve the people and not federal enforcement. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is T. Sanon, who will be followed by Olivia Green, and then Demian Godden. Go ahead, T.
Good afternoon. My name is T. Sanon, speaking on behalf of the ACLU of Washington. We strongly oppose council bills expanding CCTV and RTCC. These technologies will not make our communities safer, and they will create real harm. Surveillance data is already being requested and accessed by out-of-state and federal agencies, and is being used to target vulnerable groups, including immigrants and people seeking gender-affirming care and reproductive healthcare. In Washington DC, the local RTCC has become a hub for potential federal access to both public and private cameras. This kind of overreach is not hypothetical. It is happening. Here in Washington State, DHS and ICE have already accessed information from Washington agencies despite existing protections. Seattle should not be next. We urge you to listen to the overwhelming opposition to these technologies, including from the city's own Community Surveillance Working Group. Please vote no on both council bills. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Olivia Green, followed by Demian Godden, and then Amy Juravistical. Go ahead, Olivia.
Hi, my name is Olivia. I'm an LGBTQ resident of Seattle, and I'm calling to urge you to vote no on expanded surveillance for the Seattle Police Department. The location of the cameras in the CID and around Garfield High School and around Cal Anderson Park disproportionately target Black, Indigenous, and other people of color renters and queer people, people with disabilities, low-income, and houseless residents. Also, the expansion of Seattle's surveillance network includes the concentrated surveillance of children, specifically in the CD, Garfield, and Nova, an alternative high school that serves BIPOC youth, queer youth, and unhoused youth. So Seattle's mass surveillance is working to further build the school-to-prison pipeline. Surveillance is also a powerful tool being used by ICE and Border Control to target immigrant communities in Washington State and in Seattle. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Demian Godden, followed by Amy Juravistical, and then Alicia Hendricks. Go ahead, Demian.
Hi, I'm a Seattle homeowner in D6, and I care deeply about real public safety. That's why I strongly oppose the expansion of CCTV and Real-Time Crime Center. The proposed expansion is misguided and irresponsible. Contrary to vendor claims, such technologies will not make our communities safer. In fact, they'll put vulnerable communities in greater danger. We're being delusional if we think the data being collected here will not be used by ICE or Homeland Security to bypass due process and kidnap and abduct members of our community. This alone should lead the council to put a pause on this increased surveillance. We also know that this surveillance is going to target our most vulnerable communities and is a way-
Thank you. Our next speaker is Amy Juravistical, followed by Alicia Hendricks, and then Dre Say. Go ahead, Amy.
Hi, my name's Amy Juravisical. I'm calling from Lower Queen Anne, District 7, Bob Kettle's district. And I am calling to oppose the CCTV expansion. As a lot of other public commenters have mentioned, the surveillance targets and makes more vulnerable lots of communities, such as immigrants and folks seeking healthcare for abortion or gender-affirming care. And I also want to implore Bob Kettle and the rest of the city council to think about if they don't see themselves as one of those vulnerable community members that perhaps thinking about the fluid nature of crime, and anybody could be considered an undesirable dissenter, a protester, who is worth surveilling and targeting unfairly. The surveillance can go as far as monitoring who shows up to which community meetings and who is frequenting which businesses. It's expensive, it's dangerous, it's ineffective at reducing crime, and it's an act of betrayal for all Seattleites.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Alicia Hendricks, who will be followed by our last speaker for this remote group, Dre Say. Go ahead, Alicia.
Hello, I'm Ale Hendricks. I'm an active-duty Air Force pilot, and all of you express to represent my own as a city citizen. As ICE raids increase and BIPOC immigrants are separated from their families without due process, I do not believe that increasing surveillance on areas of higher immigrant and unhoused populations is ethical or conducive to maintaining healthy, working communities or stable families. I believe my taxpayer dollars should help people access equitable housing, food options, healthcare, and education. I believe we can fight crime by investing in one another as human beings rather than increasing the risk of our own and our neighbors' personally identifying information being absorbed by the state and mishandled by the government. Governor Bob Ferguson has declared that our state is to never bend the knee to authoritarianism. Surveillance is a key tool of fascism. And if we choose to increase police surveillance as proposed, we would be casting aside our city values of fostering and thriving equitable and sustainable using the disregard of dignity of our citizens and instead foreign funding and tools of oppression. Thank you.
Thank you. Our last speaker for this remote group is Dre Say. Go ahead, Dre.
Hi, my name is Dre, and I'm a member of the Seattle Alliance Against Racism and Political Repression. And I'm opposed to the expansion of surveillance. I do not trust SPD with our data. I'm worried that we, as the Seattle community, do not have community control of the police nor community control of this surveillance. This is a police department that loves Trump and has been sued recently, even within their own department, over issues regarding racism and sexism. I'm also worried about the CCTV expansion near Garfield High School because I'm concerned SPD will use this data as a way to criminalize Black students instead of addressing community safety. As others have spoken about, I'm especially opposed to this expansion of expensive big tech surveillance while the attacks from the oppressive Trump-led federal government are expanding. For instance, with the expanded data collected, Trump and the National Guard could come in and take over this real-time crime center. BSLU and community members are opposed to it, and I'm opposed to this too. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to go back to in-person speakers. I will try to speak a little bit louder. My apologies. We'll use numbers, which is what I prefer to ensure everyone understands where we're at. So we are now at number 31. 31 of 65. Okay, so we're going to call out the next four names, so you can start lining up. And so we have Vanessa Reyes, Nara Selson, Madison Barber, and then Sarah Turner. Oh, just a second. Okay.
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Vanessa Reyes. I am the Policy Manager with the Washington Immigrant Solidarity Network and a resident of Seattle. I'm joining the many people and organizations, along with the city's own Office of Civil Rights and the Community Police Commission, speaking against expanding CCTV and real-time crime center surveillance technology. This increased surveillance creates more risks to immigrants, refugees, and other marginalized communities, especially when this technology is operated by private parties. This summer, we have seen how our local and state protections have been disregarded by a federal administration intent on using every tool available to terrorize immigrant communities. There have been reports of how our data from our state Department of Licensing, our state Medicaid program, and also license plate readers used by the King County Housing Authority have been accessed by ICE despite our local attempts to protect that data. Seattle can't call itself a welcoming city for immigrants while expanding another avenue that can be used to detain and deport our neighbors. Please vote no to expand surveillance.
Hello again, everybody. You may remember me as Nara Selson, Sarah's progressive twin who cares about your civil liberties. Mom says I'm the pretty one. And I'm here to voice my opposition against the CCT cameras. First, I want to talk about the asinine comments that Councilmember Kettle said during the committee vote. When people were concerned about the Trump administration invading Seattle and using these cameras for illegal purposes, Bob said that wasn't going to happen, and the public commenters had talking points. They weren't talking points. They were legitimate fears that we have. ICE has already used data from the Department of Licensing and Department of Health, and the Trump administration will use the cameras for deportation because you all write terrible bills. Next, I want to address my council member, Joy Hollingsworth. You propose the cameras around Garfield, which is down the street from me. What will actually help students at Garfield is fully funding mental health services, funding after-school programs, and violence prevention programs. You posted a tasteless meme last night that showed how Seattle progressives help people of color. Well, I can tell you how the council can help people of color, and that is to vote no on the CCT cameras. Finally, these cameras have not helped prevent crime in my-
Thank you.
We have Madison Barber, and then Sarah Turner, and I believe it's Sage Mitchell.
Hello, my name is Madison Barber. I'm a recent resident of District 1. And I'm here to encourage y'all to vote no to CB 121052 and CB 121053. I recently moved up here from New Orleans, Louisiana, where similar technology was used. And I can tell y'all firsthand that it has done nothing to mitigate or even prevent crime. And if anything, the ordinances that y'all are proposing would be dangerous and invasive to our communities, particularly our marginalized communities, as well as being antithetical to Seattle being a sanctuary city. And if all else, these ordinances would be symbolic of bending the knee to the Trump administration. So vote no.
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Sarah Turner, and I live block off Aurora Avenue in Councilmember Juarez's district. And I'm a member of University Congregational United Church of Christ in Councilmember Rivera's district. As a Christian and as a resident of an already highly surveilled neighborhood, I'm deeply concerned about civil rights violations by expanding the city's real-time video surveillance. This expanded surveillance puts already vulnerable people in our neighborhoods at even higher risk: our unhoused neighbors, our immigrant neighbors, regardless of their documentation or citizenship status, our Black and Brown neighbors, our LGBTQ neighbors, and our neighbors seeking reproductive healthcare. This is a threat to the safety of all of us. Seattle has been a sanctuary to so many communities. As a Christian and as your constituent, I take seriously our claim to provide sanctuary. And I urge the city council to also take this value seriously. Thank you.
So after Sage, we then have Emma. I believe it's Emma Har, if I'm not mistaken. And then Nicholas Layden, and then Philip Lewis.
Hello, my name is Sage Mitchell. I am opposed to the expansion of surveillance in Seattle. It is deeply problematic to surveil the population and use it against us when the federal government is overreaching the way it is. We have a situation where the three branches of government at the federal level are essentially colluding with each other, and the checks and balances are not doing what they're supposed to. This is your opportunity, respectfully, to actually stand up and oppose what's happening there. You need to protect this community. That is your duty. And I'm not seeing that yet. I demand it. I would like to encourage people to read IBM and the Holocaust and Automating Inequality. Thank you.
We have Emma.
Good afternoon, council. I'm a resident of the CID. We are living in a time where the impact of a surveillance state weighs more heavily on an individual's experience than ever previously in the history of this country. Lopsided immigration enforcement continues to stabilize and destroy communities, both socially and economically across the country, especially in blue states like ours. We would be doing ourselves a disservice by building a centralized video monitoring system that is easily co-opted by those anti-democratic and anti-American forces which are now at play. This proposal makes assumptions about SPD's ability to handle this data in a nondiscriminatory manner, and inherently makes the assumption that these kinds of systems cannot be abused. A well-meaning organization, which I believe you all are, can build something like a mass surveillance system with good intentions and then have that system used outside their control in hostile ways. It cannot be stressed enough that the law does not matter to those for whom this data is valuable. If you collect it, they will steal it, illegal or not. It can be tempting for a governing body to try and solve problems that are people problems, like those that Seattle is faced with, using technology rather than compassion. This does not work. I hope that Seattle council can understand the gravity of what they're implementing. Many of you likely entered this chamber already certain as to your-
Okay, we now have Nicholas, and then Philip Lewis, and Chelsea Stevenson. Nicholas, Philip, Chelsea, Gimeadow, Zazvieta? Okay, Nicholas is not here. Okay, we'll proceed to Philip.
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Phil Lewis, and I serve as one of the co-chairs for the Human Rights Commission and as a pastor in the South Lake Union neighborhood. I've seen the impacts of policy like this firsthand, actually in my mom's hometown of Memphis, Tennessee. Too often, these kinds of approaches in Memphis push young people into school-to-prison pipeline rather than setting them up to thrive as the community desires for them to be able to do. I want to thank Councilmember Rink in her office for the civil rights analysis that she requested from the Office of Civil Rights in that way. And thank you for the amendment that you provided to protect our community in that way. We know that surveillance does not crack down on violent crime. Surveillance actually cracks down on the civil rights of Black and Brown immigrant communities in our neighborhoods and in our city. We know that the realities of these impacts are felt throughout our city and in our country. And this is why I urge you, on behalf of the co-chairs of the Human Rights Commission, to vote no on this bill, to follow the directive of the Office of Civil Rights that was given to you all. Thank you for your time.
We have Chelsea, and then Gimeadow, and then Jason.
Hi, council members. My name is Chelsea Stevenson, and I'm a resident and voter of District 5 of Councilmember Juarez. And I am a former longtime employee providing community safety work in District 2 and currently serving as a volunteer on the Human Rights Commission. I am here asking you guys today to please vote no on the expansion of the CCTV. I, having worked a decade with young people and marginalized communities in South Seattle, I have seen firsthand the fears and the concerns brought forth when proposing legislation like this. I am instead asking that you delay expansion of the surveillance pilot program until comprehensive evaluation data is available and federal data access protections can be guaranteed. evaluation data is available and federal data access protections can be guaranteed. Conduct meaningful community engagement with immigrant refugees and other vulnerable communities, and invest instead in evidence-based...
Thank you.
Guimeda, and then Jason, and then we'll go back into remote speakers.
Hello, council. My name is Guillermo Sasweta, and I'm here on behalf of One America. One America is an immigrant rights organization that has served this city for nearly 24 years. And in the name of the safety and protection of our immigrant communities, we urge you to vote no on expanding the CCTV and RTCC surveillance technologies. We are disappointed that the city has ignored the recommendations of its own surveillance working group, the Office of Civil Rights, advice against the adoption of these bills, and this raises serious concerns about the harm these technologies will bring, the lack of outreach by this council to communities who will be most impacted, and the hastiness of this process as a whole. As service providers, we also fear that these tools will be used to target us when we're working with clients and members. There is no guarantee that the city can protect this data from being abused by the federal government. We live in deeply unprecedented times where this federal administration is using every tool at their disposal to violate our rights. Let's not give them another tool. We strongly urge this council to delay these bills and first conduct meaningful community engagement with these communities. Thank you.
Jason Chen. And Jason Chen will be the last speaker. We'll move into remote speakers.
It would be incredibly naive of this council not to recognize how this proposed expansion of surveillance will end up targeting the most vulnerable among your constituents: activists, marginalized communities, and most relevantly now, immigrants. Let's not forget how in 2020, Operation Palladium aggressively spied on civilians 24/7 in order to send federal agents into major sanctuary cities to increase immigrant arrests. And now, we've seen internal emails describing ICE's intent to, quote, "flood the streets with agents." Even if this is not misused by SPD, what guarantee can there possibly be that DHS will not be able to subpoena for access to this coverage? If you are a city council member who is opposed to the destructive, intrusive, and unconstitutional methods of the Trump administration, then vote against creating this dangerous and invasive surveillance network.
Thank you. Our next three remote speakers will be Cody Zaluski, Michael Schroder, followed by Jackson Maher. Go ahead, Cody.
Hi, my name is Cody Zaluski from District Four, and I'm speaking strongly against the expansion of CCTV and realtime crime center software. With ICE rounding up our neighbors in states like Texas, abusing the system to hunt down women who seek abortions in our state, I, for one, am not naive enough to think that this won't be used in the same way here. Seattle has a progressive reputation with respect to civil liberties, and with the most recent primary results, it should be a reminder. It's embarrassing to think that anyone here in the city would be gullible enough to assume that I'm in pinky swear. With prevent use by the current fascist administration, it's only a matter of time before the National Guard is deployed in Seattle. The city council is another example of timeless Democrats bending in continuously to Trump, and fundamentally, anyone who votes for this is acquiescing; you shouldn't be reeling. Thank you, and I see my time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Michael Schroder, followed by Jackson Maher, and then Jordan Hume. Go ahead, Michael Schroder.
Hello. Thanks for your time, council members. My name is Michael Schroder, and I live in Beacon Hill, Seattle. I'm asking for the council to vote no to banning the use of CCTV surveillance across Seattle. This is a warrantless dragnet and will be abused by the federal government, who have shown that they are more than happy to send troops to squash political dissent. Not only will this have a chilling effect on free speech, it is unnecessary. Public data from the Seattle Police Department has shown that both property and violent crime rates have been decreasing. Despite the SPD's claim that they are too understaffed to fight crime, Seattle's property crime is at a historic low, and violent crime has dropped below levels seen in 2018 before the spike caused by the pandemic. Our publicly available data shows that the police are operating perfectly well, better than ever, in fact, with their reduced staffing. There's simply no reason to waste money on a system we don't need, we don't want, and will dramatically undermine our privacy and...
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jackson Maher, followed by Jordan Hume, and then Nate Buck. Go ahead, Jackson.
My name is Jackson. I live in District Three, and I am urging the council to vote no to the surveillance program. Despite the promises of Police Chief Sean Barnes and this council to protect Seattle from the Trump administration, SPD has already facilitated their mass deportation campaign. Today, the council is considering giving that police department a massive expansion of surveillance that they would have no ability to prevent from falling into the hands of ICE or the federal government. They have already promised, that administration has already promised to expand their police campaign beyond DC to other blue cities, naming Seattle specifically. They will come here. The only question is whether we will have handed them the tools to crack down on immigrants, queer people, and communities of color that they have promised to attack. I urge the council to delay expansion of the Surveillance Pilot Program until federal data access protections can be guaranteed, and to invest in evidence-based community safety programs that actually reduce harm while strengthening community trust, which is what many of you ran on in the first place. I see the rest of my time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jordan Hume, who will be followed by Nate Buck, and then Nicole Albright. Go ahead, Jordan.
Hi, my name is Jordan Hume. I'm a resident of Capitol Hill. I'm calling to strongly oppose the mass expansion of surveillance cameras in Capitol Hill and the rest of the city. At a time when the federal government is trashing privacy laws, sending in troops to cities like Seattle, and compelling cooperation from local law enforcement, it's truly an outrage that the council is considering a mass expansion of surveillance. There is no way to assure that these cameras won't be turned against Seattleites to violate our protected rights to assembly and free speech. If we think that some amendment to this, or a state law, is going to somehow prevent this abuse by the least law-abiding presidency in our history, then we are incredibly naive. ICE is already getting data from local and state law enforcement. Why does this council want to make it easier for vulnerable Seattleites to be terrorized? Also, I find it very interesting that when I review the map of the proposed camera locations, there are these dense clusters in Cap Hill, Central District, and First Hill, but not in Ballard, not in Wallingport, or West Seattle. Surely, this council isn't suggesting that neighborhoods historically known for their large queer and Black communities are somehow in need of extra surveillance, right? I strongly urge all of you to reject this mass expansion. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Nate Buck, who will be followed by Nicole Albright, and then Bee Jackson. Go ahead, Nate.
Hi, council. Thank you for your time. My name is Nate Buck, and I'm a District Three resident. I want to focus on the expansion from the existing on-premise RTCC to a cloud-based service provided by companies outside of Washington State. This move will open Seattle residents to attacks from out-of-state organizations who will bypass our own state laws. Among other concerns mentioned today, this will enable anti-trans lawmakers in other states to pursue those traveling here for necessary care. I have a friend in Linwood who offered his home to a mutual friend from Florida so that she could come to Washington anticipating the anti-trans legislation that we've recently seen there. I drove her to her first appointment with a suicide prevention clinic, since she was unfit to drive as she was relying on self-harm to get even a few hours of sleep each night. The thought that state authorities from the other side of the country would know her exact whereabouts is horrifying. I'm positive she would be dead if she had been delayed in receiving care here, and I know that will be the case for others unless council votes against these ordinances. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Nicole Albright, followed by Bee Jackson, and then Matt Offenbacher. Go ahead, Nicole.
Hi, my name is Nicole. I'm a resident of D3 in Capitol Hill, and I'm going to be echoing other speakers here today, urging the council to vote no on expanding police surveillance in our neighborhoods. It's been just months since Trump left office, and he's already used violent crime as a pretext to send troops into cities like ours. Seattle has already been named a target, and we have no real legal protection stopping surveillance data from subpoenas by ICE or federal agencies. And let's be honest, with multiple SPD officers identified at the Capitol on January 6th, how can we trust this department to stand up to federal overreach? And given their behavior when facing scrutiny, how can we trust that they even want to? This isn't about safety; this is about power, and we should be asking, who is this surveillance actually protecting? Who is it actually putting at risk? Seattle's path to safety lies in accountability and community investment, not in expanding tools that can be turned against our neighbors. For those of you still on the fence because you are not in a minority group, I want to remind you that policing the margins is only the beginning of fascism.
Our next speaker is Bee Jackson, who will be followed by Matt Offenbacher, and then Justin Ward. Go ahead, Bee. And you may need to press star six, Bee. Okay, we are going to move on to Matt Offenbacher, who will be followed by Justin Ward. Matt, are you there?
I am. Hi there. Hi, council members. Thanks for listening to us today, and I do hope you're taking in all this amazing testimony. It was less than a year ago that you voted for a two-year CCTV pilot program. This was a compromise. There was strong community opposition to camera surveillance at that time. You went ahead and approved it, but you also promised us that you would evaluate the program before any further expansion of it. This evaluation hasn't happened. A lot of voices are telling you expanding CCTV is a very bad idea: community organizations, religious leaders, many, many concerned residents, Office of Civil Rights, your own police accountability partners. We don't all have to agree for democracy to work, though we do have to try our best to be honorable. And what does it mean to serve your city with honor? It means no bait and switch, no squirrely backroom deals.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Justin Ward, who will be followed by Garrison Dinsmore, and then we'll try Bee Jackson once more, but go ahead, Garrison. I'm sorry, go ahead, Justin Ward.
Hi, my name is Justin Ward. I live in D2, and I run the police watchdog group Divas SPD. I feel like the risks and threats of this legislation have already been covered pretty well. I want to talk about the benefits, of which I think there are a few. Particularly, I want to focus on how the Seattle Police Department has sold this. They've said that they had 600 incidents that the RTC was involved in over about 60 days. So, do the math, that's 10 incidents per day. So we don't really know how the RTC was involved. We do know that there are less than 10 incidents that were included on the police blotter, and for the most part, they were kind of underwhelming. So like, the two that resulted in arrests were misdemeanor crimes, DUI, and a simple assault. So if that's like their best foot forward, add like some real doubt.
Our next speaker is Garrison Dinsmore, who will be followed by Bee Jackson, if Bee is online. Go ahead, Garrison.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. Thank you, council, for your time. My name is Garrison Dinsmore. I'm a renter in D5. Benjamin Franklin said, "Those who would give up essential liberty to purchase a little temporary safety serve neither liberty nor safety." Privacy is a constitutional right and a mental health necessity. Still, you have shown, published in Oxford Press University Journal of Neuroscience of Consciousness, that when people are surveilled, they begin to exhibit symptoms of psychosis and paranoia. As people have already mentioned, these cameras are going to be set up in neighborhoods that target groups and minorities that the Trump administration targets. Even Nashville, Tennessee declined to move forward with the FUSES system, which is the system that SPD is currently using, because Nashville believed that it would funnel straight to ICE. Texas used RTCC to get CCTV data from Washington State. We can't allow that.
Our last remote speaker for this group is Bee Jackson. Go ahead, Bee. There you go. Yes.
Okay. I'm Bee Jackson. I live in Capitol Hill. Definitely want you guys to say no to expanding these CCTVs, because it's literally giving like, open-air prison. Like, it's really giving fascism, and I'm really like not surprised that like, maybe like all the white council members would vote yes, but like all the POC, like it would really be giving like aligning with like fascist, and like that's so not cute, not cool. So yeah, don't do it. Just don't do it, babe. Yeah, thank you.
We're now moving back to the in-person commenters.
Thank you, Jody. Okay, the next four speakers, we have Jackie Magda, Joel Schwillinger, Simon Knappus, again, apologies for the mispronunciation, and then Clara Cantor. So it's Jackie, Joel, Simon, Clara.
Hi, council members. My name is Jackie Magda, and I'm a resident of District Three. I'm here today to oppose the expansion of the CCTV and RTCC technologies. A 40-year study conducted by the City University of New York and cited by SPD states that the CCTV cameras had no significant effect on public safety, on violent crime rates, and that public safety agencies combating violent crimes may need to consider whether resources would be better allocated towards other crime prevention matters. So instead of spending millions of dollars on ineffective technology, we should instead be investing in services like housing and healthcare for all, and mental health services, which are actually known to reduce crime. Not only are the technologies ineffective, but actively harmful, especially for marginalized communities like immigrants, BIPOC, unhoused, and queer people. We've already seen one such example where SPD incorrectly jailed an innocent man for one month due to the CCTV footage camera. The data can easily get into the wrong hands and be used to expedite deportation of our immigrant neighbors. So in this alarming moment of history, let's go with compassion instead of surveillance.
Thank you.
We have Joel, Simon. Joel, and then Simon. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Joel. I'm a resident of District Six, and I'm here to voice my opposition to the bill that will expand mass surveillance throughout Seattle. Expanding surveillance under constituents won't change the circumstances under which crime has taken place, and these cameras will only serve as a way to perpetrate the prison industrial complex, which we know for a fact does not reduce crime. The Washington DOL has already been granting access to ICE for its internal search engine, which contains sensitive details such as names, addresses, driving histories, and vehicle information. It is not far-fetched to assume that these new cameras will inevitably be used to detain or deport families and community members. It is not a coincidence that these cameras are primarily located in queer and marginalized communities. Mass surveillance does not elicit the feeling of safety. If you are actually serious about reducing crime, we need to be planning years in advance and investing in mental health care, affordable housing, and after-school programs for our communities, rather than reacting out of fear and creating a system of surveillance that does nothing to address the root of the problem. Vote no.
Hi, pardon me. My name is Simon Knappus, and I'm here in my capacity as a member of the Board of Directors of the Beacon Hill Council. The Beacon Hill Council advocates for a welcoming, diverse, and healthy community. Because of this, we are concerned with the expanded surveillance proposed in CB 12152 and CB 121053. I'm going to read a much smaller version of the letter that we sent out to you all, but I expect that it's in your inbox. Our neighborhood is 70% people of color, 44% immigrants and refugees, and home to many queer and trans people and people with disabilities. The risks posed by surveillance are greater now that the US Supreme Court has lifted restrictions on immigration raid procedures. We are deeply concerned that the Seattle Police Officer Guild, Mike Solan, has publicly made statements that he would support assisting ICE, and we are concerned about the security...
We next have Clara. Following Clara is Eric Kennedy, Patrick McKee, and Jan Miller. Do we have Clara? Is there Clara? Okay, I don't see Clara, so then we'll move on. Eric Kennedy, Patrick McKee, then Jan Miller. Okay, no Eric. Okay, moving forward. Patrick McKee?
Um, no, I'm...
Oh, sorry. I apologize. Thank you. Go ahead. Your name again, Eric?
My name is Eric.
Thank you.
I'm here to speak about youth rights. I'm a member of the National Youth Rights Association. I think the city of Seattle could do more to protect the legal rights and political freedoms of its minors. We would like cafeterias to stay open during weekends and school breaks. We would also like the city of Seattle to extend voting rights to minors in council and mayoral elections. Any minor in the city of Seattle, who lives in the city of Seattle, deserves the right to have a say in what goes on in the city of Seattle because it affects them. Thank you.
So we have Patrick?
Yeah, hi, I'm Pat McKee. I live in West Seattle. I particularly want Councilmember Saka, who voted last year, to approve the CCTV pilot to hear me. The council is now considering expanding an overhyped, AI-driven surveillance technology of no proven effectiveness that's cynically being presented as a one-simple-trick solution to public safety concerns. You've got your own City Office of Civil Rights calling this expansion a definite threat to already marginalized communities with, quote, "direct consequences for equal protection, privacy, and the freedoms of speech and association." privacy, and the freedoms of speech and association." Meanwhile, we're looking at a demonstrably fascist federal regime now threatening America's cities with actual war, a regime which will unquestionably end up accessing this data, whatever promises Seattle officials make. Every one of you knows this. There's a reason cities such as Denver, Austin, Nashville are rejecting similar programs. Come on, councilmembers, the pilot hasn't panned out, the facts on the ground have changed tragically. You're not married to any previous...
We next have Jan Miller, Ali Carlson, Dennis... I think it's Dennis Madrigal?
I think it might be Ian Miller?
Oh, it's an I versus a J.
Yeah, I got it. I got scratch writing.
Maybe it is it. Yeah, Ian, thank you.
And before you begin, if you've heard your name, please stand, please be ready to speak as soon as the person in front of you has ended speaking, because we want to make sure that we can get to the people on the phone as well.
So, we have Ian, Ali, Dennis, and then Carl.
All right. Hello, City Council. My name is Ian Miller. I'm from D3, and I'm here to urge you to vote no on expanding the police department surveillance systems. The consent decree has been terminated, meaning the SPD has less accountability now more than ever. They are not a transformed institution. Just a few months ago, they used excessive force on counter protesters at the anti-LGBTQ rally in Cal Anderson, a historically queer neighborhood. The SPD is complicit in the kidnappings of immigrants. Just a few months ago, the SPD assisted by arresting protesters trying to stop unidentified ICE agents from illegally kidnapping immigrants. The Supreme Court just ruled that ICE is allowed to detain and question anyone they expect of being an illegal immigrant, just on the color of their skin and the language that they speak. Do we really believe that we can trust the SPD? Do we think they wouldn't collaborate with ICE and wouldn't use this surveillance footage to racially profile people, arrest immigrants, and protesters? To those who want to vote yes, I want to ask, are you trying to be complicit, or do you just think that this is something that won't work? It won't work.
Ali?
Hi, I'm a resident of District 3 and a frequenter of the CID, and I'm here to oppose the efforts to expand CCTV cameras throughout the city. I get we're kind of a tech city, but like, come on. At least in regards to surveillance, I can't imagine that enabling the encroachment of civil liberties by administration best described as a regime is a really wise use of tax dollars during a budget deficit. I know we have a very long time-tested tradition here in this city of making short-sighted, stupid decisions, but I beg us not to do it this time. To slow down here, I'm a queer resident of the city. I'm tired of going out and every day increasingly fearing for my life, fearing for my neighbor's life, fearing for my friend's life, who are immigrants, who are also queer people, just based on the color of their skin. Even citizens, they're going after citizens. We've all seen Garcia. We all are Garcia. Vote no, and regardless of how you vote... We'll get to see you after the vote.
We now have, we have Dennis, and then following Dennis will be Carl Nelson, and then we'll move into remote speakers.
Hello. Dennis Madrigal. Throughout the life of the USA, the mere definition of what it is to be a criminal has changed many of times, from the very union workers protesting for our labor rights, the black community protesting against racial inequality, which was legal, to even right now to the very people protesting against the apartheid state of Israel, or being threatened and have been threatened, and being labeled as criminals for being against our nation's best interests and for being anti-Semitic towards Israel. This very proposition to expand the CCTV cameras across Seattle will greatly empower those in power who wish to, who wish to once again redefine what it is to be a criminal. During a time when now, the Supreme Court gave the power to ICE to racially profile people based on the language they speak, their skin color, occupation, and affiliations, combined with the fact that the very person's right to protest under attack. Recently, it was discovered that the Washington State Department of Licensing has been found to have misused data sharing agreements with ICE to track down undocumented residents. Even the very Patriot Act we had was misused. We cannot and should not trust a state with mass camera surveillance, for the history has shown us that with this level of surveillance, there will be people in the body of power willing to misuse it. As a proud leader of Team DieG, I do not trust the SPD, ICE, the Trump administration, and the legal apartheid state of Israel.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Members of council, my name is Carl Nelson. I'm a 16-year Seattle resident, renter, small business owner, and a member of the Cedar Crossing Tenants Association. I am also here today to speak in opposition to expanding the surveillance pilot. Earlier last month, Washington DC's police force was literally taken over by the federal government, which prompted the head of Seattle Police Officer Guild Union, Mike Solin, to say, a man elected by about 60% of his rank-and-file membership, "Pay attention to what's happening in the District of Columbia, because it is the blueprint of what you're going to see nationwide when it comes to the Trump administration's public safety actions." He said this to the union head of Washington DC's police union. "To imagine that Seattle is somehow unique from other blue cities in this country is naively foolish, at best, and willfully destructive at worst at a time like this. Research has not supported claims that this technology has any real effect in its purported aims of combating gun violence or human trafficking, and given our federal situation, I urge you all to shoot this down." Thank you.
We'll now move back into remote public commenters. Our next three remote commenters will be John Brown, followed by Rowan Kaufman, and then Liam Niehaus Staub. Go ahead, John Brown.
Thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen in the chamber and the Seattle City Council, I will spare you time today with a very simple statement. I have this much to say to the politicians on the dais today. If you do not protect the Fourth Amendment of the United States Constitution, people will embrace the Second as the solution to their problems. Remember that. Good day.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Rowan Kaufman, who will be followed by Liam Niehaus Staub, and then Sage Walland. Go ahead, Rowan.
Hi, my name is Rowan Kaufman. I am a Seattle City resident in Beacon Hill, District 2, City Councilmember. I am speaking today to ask what your constituent and frankly beg you as a community member of your city that you vote no on expanding surveillance technology implementation. You already know and have heard plenty today of the dangers to immigrant community members, abortion seekers, and every single one of us posed by this surveillance. This should be more than enough to guarantee your vote against this threat to our city. Personally, as a part of the 50% of Seattleites who are renters and we subjected to the placement of cameras in apartment buildings by SPD or by landlords, I do not even have the comfort of not being surveilled in my home, the way that those privileged enough to reside in single-family homes in this city have been promised. In our political climate, it is beyond obvious why such increased surveillance leaves me honestly terrified, and I ask this not only for myself, my neighbors, my city as a whole, but for all of you, you two councilmembers and your family and friends deserve to...
Our next speaker is Liam Niehaus Staub, followed by Sage Wayland. Go ahead, Liam.
Hello, my name is Liam from District 4, and I'm also speaking in opposition of expanding police surveillance. Just because we live in a quote-unquote "blue" city doesn't mean that these tools cannot be used against us by the Trump administration, as everyone has said previously. The SPD has already cooperated with ICE to arrest Washingtonians, and I'd like to now read you a poem by Martin Niemoller. "First, they came for the socialists, and I did not speak out, because I was not a socialist. Then, they came for the trade unionists, and I did not speak out, because I was not a trade unionist. Then, they came for the Jews, and I did not speak out, because I was not a Jew. Then, they came for me, and there was no one left to speak for me. So, I'm now speaking out, while I'm a man, and I would like all of you to speak out as well by voting no on this bill. Do not give them more tools so that they can silence us. Thank you."
Thank you. Our next speaker is Sage Wayland, followed by Charlie Kaplan-Pettis, and then Dylan Baker. Go ahead, Sage. Babe, you may need to press star six. There you go.
Hi. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, I just also wanted to call and be in opposition to the expansion of this ineffective and dangerous tech. I know the council is not naive, because to work in politics and be behind those closed doors, you can't be. This will be used to harm our neighbors, it will be used to harm people, and whatever the policy states, it does not matter. So, don't let this be your legacy. I really hope you decide to do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Charlie Kaplan-Pettis, followed by Dylan Baker, and then Char Smith. Go ahead, Charlie.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Charlie Kaplan-Pettis, and I appreciate the time today. As so many speakers have said already, even under the best of circumstances and with the best intentions, the research does not support an expansion of our surveillance like this. But now, more than ever, it is very obvious why this would be detrimental to our communities and to you as individuals in the near future. And I know that you've probably come into this meeting with minds made up, or how you voted in the previous support for this, but I would just like to say that it is a sign of courage and strength to be able to meet a moment and where it is and to change your mind. And I think we've all heard enough today to know what is right for our communities. And I urge you to vote no on the expansion of surveillance in Seattle. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Dylan Baker, who will be followed by Char Smith, and then Jay Foxglove. Go ahead, Dylan.
Hi, my name is Dylan Baker. I'm also speaking to oppose the expansion of the surveillance network. You've heard plenty of counterarguments at this point, so I'll keep it personal and on one point. I'm the lead research engineer at the Distributed AI Research Institute. I study harms of technology and AI bias. I'm a former Google engineer in computer vision. I'm also Seattle homeowner in District 1. I do a lot of studying of technology, who builds it, how it's built, and I've been working in tech for a long time. I see the way that this stuff is developed. These technologies are not created by people who are experts in keeping people safe. They're created by people who are experts at building cameras and selling them to police departments. They market their technology however they need to, and you, our representatives, are their target audience. I've watched this happen so many times before. The people who keep people safe, who study how to keep people safe, have other findings, investing in things like housing and expanded library hours that keeps people safe.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Char Smith, who will be followed by Jay Foxglove, and then David Haynes. Go ahead, Char.
Hello. Hello, my name is Char Smith. I'm a District 2 resident, former commissioner for the Seattle Renters Commission. I'm calling to say hell no to this expansion of extralegal surveillance. A vote to expand this program is a vote explicitly for Trump's fascist agenda, is a vote to embrace the executive misaligned worldview that civil rights are an impediment to our growth rather than a necessity for the survival of the republic and for the safety of our communities, and is a vote to surrender in advance to the militarized response that our city will see foisted upon it by the president sooner or later. This vote will not make any of us safer, but it will ensure that Trump's goons, such as ICE, DHS, and others, will be actively assisted by both SPD and by this very council in a quest to tear apart families and send our neighbors to concentration camps in the Everglades, in El Salvador, and elsewhere. In parting, I offer my heartfelt thanks to all those who took time out of their day to sign up and show up to Comet. Clap all you want, you beautiful people, it's your city home, not the council's.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jay Foxglove, followed by David Haynes, and then Becky Sessa. Go ahead, Jay.
Hi, my name, my name is Jay Foxglove. I'm a renter in D3 in the Central District, and I'm joining the course of voices here calling you to vote against the proposed expansion of surveillance in the city of Seattle. I hope that our time and testimonies will not be in vain. You cannot proudly claim Seattle to be a sanctuary city if you implement these measures, as we have no assurances as to how the data will be managed and no guarantee that it will not fall into the hands of ICE and other federal agencies with nefarious intentions. You cannot pat yourselves on the back of creating a culture of inclusivity and safety in the city if you are threatening the safety of vulnerable communities by following their every move as they go about their lives. Time and again, your constituents, your community members, have brought forth data and personal stories that stress the difference that funding could make to strengthen community resources and programs to help folks experiencing homelessness, mental health emergencies, and those in lower-income brackets. Yet, time and again, this council has voted to increase policing to no measurable impact on reducing crime. Increasing surveillance will likewise not reduce crime and will instead endanger the communities and make Seattle the city that it is.
Thank you. Our next speaker is David Haynes, and David will be followed by our last remote speaker for this group, Becky Sessa. Go ahead, David.
Hi. Noble use of crime-fighting tools. If a gun-toting criminal walks up and robs my employees in the stadium district again, we need a more detailed video and a capability to deploy a drone to hone in on a perpetrator attempting to run or drive out of the area and change the color of their shirt around the corner, because by the time the cops get informed, it turns out most of them would be inside the Seahawks game in opposing team's jerseys, making overtime, entrapping drunk Seahawks fans, while not even being tied into fighting the crime around the stadium district. I hate to say this, but we need drones to hone in on a perpetrator and tie in the kiosk to the stadium network of CCTV cameras and make it more deployable and user-friendly, and, you know, rely on the vetting and the proper hiring and training, because...
Thank you. Our last speaker for this remote group is Becky Sessa. Go ahead, Becky. Becky may not be online anymore. Let's move on.
Hi, I...
Thank you. Yes, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, I'm coming from an allergy appointment. Okay, we do not want more surveillance in our communities, and ACLU, Washington, has written a letter with studies showcasing why these technologies are not equitable, effective, and violate civil rights. We are supposed to be a sanctuary city, yet I don't see the city or state doing enough to protect our neighbors from ICE and ensure they identify themselves, excuse me, or do not show up at immigration hearings. There have been data-sharing incidents at the state level, and I oppose this opportunity to create a new path for ICE to target our neighbors. What makes me feel unsafe at the moment is the overreach of our federal government with its racist targeting of the people I care about. I had the privilege of growing up with immigrant communities, and I want to see their safety prioritized, since they are what makes this city a place I want to live. This surveillance is not only unnecessary, but I oppose its possible consequences. I urge you then that...
Thank you. We'll now move back to in-person public commenters.
Okay, our next, excuse me, our next speakers are going to be Kate Rubin, Ali Knowles, CSSD, Cameron Fraser, Casey Siligold, Eden Armstrong, Bethany Miller, Sandy H. All right, so we have Kate Rubin. Thanks.
Hi, I am the co-chair of the Seattle Renters Commission. The proposed mass surveillance expansion disproportionately targets renters, Black, Indigenous, and other people of color, and queer, trans, disabled, and low-income residents. SPD plans to accept live video feeds from apartment buildings. Renters could be surveilled and tracked from the moment that they leave their homes. We're facing unprecedented threats from our federal government. It's time to take the moment that we're in seriously. A 40-year meta-analysis found that surveillance has no effect on violent crime, so you're considering putting our safety, privacy, and civil liberties at risk? For what exactly? The Renters Commission joins the Office for Civil Rights, Community Surveillance Working Group, Community Police Commission, and the Human Rights Commission in opposing this dangerous and expensive expansion of mass surveillance. Thank you.
The people here, the people here have been very charitable to you. They've appealed to your humanity. I will not, because I do not believe you have it. They've made logical arguments about how this program will not do what you say it will do, and I won't do that either, because I think you know that. I think this program is a means for you to offer up Seattle to Donald Trump on a silver platter, because you think it's safer for you to live at the right hand of the devil than under his boot, because you are cowards. All right? So, I'm not here to tell you to vote no, because I know it doesn't matter. What I'm here to remind you is that the tech billionaires that have all bought and paid for all of you already are building their bunkers in rural New Zealand, because they know this is all coming down around them, and they need somewhere to hide from us. And when the power grid goes off, they're not bringing you with them. When we start eating people, we're going to remember who voted for these things that made our lives worse. We're going to know your names, we're going to know your faces, we're going to know your families, we're going to know where you live, and we're going to come. If you get a chance to kill yourself before then, I recommend you take it. Also, what? Two parts, use motor oil, one part of black acrylic paint, one part crush class, can damage obstacles to the point they need to be fully replaced. Kill yourselves, you fucking fools!
Please proceed.
Hi, please read item 4.4, the CCTV SAR. It explicitly lists the original locations as being part of the pilot and via omission designates the new locations as having a duration of deployment that is permanent. A record-breaking amount of people submitted public comments opposing both these original surveillance technologies and 60 organizations, such as Lavender Rights Project, Casa Latina, Rainer Beach Action Coalition, Chief Seattle Club and Planned Parenthood, among others, all voiced opposition to rollout of these technologies. And again, there was a huge amount of public comments submitted to Seattle IT opposing the expansion of these surveillance technologies. Plus, the Community Surveillance Working Group, Community Police Commission and Seattle Renters Commission have opposed both technologies. As the August primary showed, the majority of Seattle voters are not happy with council members' actions and don't want these technologies. Any council member who approves these council bills is clearly not going to be re-elected. Listen to residents, please vote no on both council bills. Thank you.
We have S D.
Hi, I am a resident in District 5 and I often, at least once, sometimes twice a day, I pass through the intersection of Aurora and 85th where this technology already exists on almost every single corner of it. I feel great shame because about a month ago, I was sitting at that light. I was about seven cars deep, waiting for the light to turn during rush hour. And at the corner is a gas station, which has about four cameras on the roof of it and hardly ever see any vehicles go in there and get gas. But there was a dilapidated RV parked at one of the station gas pumps. And while I was waiting, I saw SPD come to that gas station. And the owner of that RV was about to exit and leave, but they came and they harassed him for expired tabs. Harassed him for expired tabs.
Thank you very much.
Cameron Frazier and then Casey and then Eden. Cameron? Casey?
All right. Hello, my name is Cameron, speaking on behalf of Tech4 Housing in opposition to the proposed expansion of video surveillance in Seattle. This proposal comes while ICE is harvesting all available data to hunt down the most vulnerable in our community. We know this type of data is nearly impossible to protect from abuse once gathered. So do the state agencies whose data has been accessed by ICE despite commitments to protect it. In this context, the public absolutely cannot entrust surveillance tech to the police department with more January 6th attendees than any other in the country or the department whose union president said the armed takeover of DC should serve as a blueprint for policing nationwide. This summer, a Seattle resident spent four weeks in jail due to SPD's shoddy analysis of surveillance footage. That person was lucky to be an Amazon employee with all the resources to defend themselves. This legislation would expand those flawed practices across the city to people without those resources. Other cities have brought down crime faster with investments in community health and violence disruption programs, which are actually backed by peer-reviewed evidence. This program would be...
Casey and then Eden.
Hello, my name is Casey and I'm living in Capitol Hill. Just like everybody else here, we want you to vote no on this program. It does not help keep people safe. As an ER nurse, I keep people safe and that's not by surveilling them constantly. It's by offering them support and help in where they need it. What in the 1984 are we doing? Why are we freaking trying to surveil like me walking to the park or going to the grocery store? Like, I don't feel safer having cameras on me just trying to live my life. It doesn't help anybody. And I hope that those who have already made up their minds actually take their constituents into account. We've all come here today in hopes of appealing to you because you're supposed to listen to us and our opinions and what makes us feel safe. And I can see people can't even make eye contact with us or they're reading their emails or making faces. And how does that let us have faith in you guys? We want us to be safe too.
We have Eden. After Eden will be Bethany, then Sandy.
Good afternoon, council. My name is Eden Armstrong. I'm here with a unique opinion of not really approving of what you are all considering today. I am a trans woman who comes from Florida, a Republican state, and I have a very good understanding of what discrimination and surveillance is like in that state, where I have to worry if I have to use the restroom of my choice when I use the restroom, right? Using these CCTV cameras, allowing the city to set up this kind of infrastructure allows the current administration to use that infrastructure. Apologies. If you think that is not possible, if you think, oh, it couldn't happen here, I assure you it could. Harvard, one of the most renowned institutions in the United States, was not able to keep up against the Trump administration. In what world do you think that is not something that could happen to the city of Seattle? It can and it will. Creating and enforcing this program in a far bigger manner than it has been will only seek to hurt minority groups that you so diligently work to protect. I urge you to vote no. Thank you.
Good afternoon, city council. My name is Bethany Miller. I live in District 7 and I also expose the expansion of Seattle Police Department use of CCTV. I echo the concerns of many of these other people who have spoken today that this will not prevent crime, merely document the crimes that happen. We have better ways to spend money in this city, things that could really improve the lives of people who live here more than being surveilled. With the current regime that is in place in DC, I think it is not, none of us are safer having this data out there. I also believe that once we cede this privacy, it is really hard to get it back. Once these cameras are in place, taking them down is really hard. Once a fascist regime comes in, it's hard to get them out. That is why we need to resist now. Bob, I'm here. You're my neighbor. I'm here representing my family and a large group of your neighbors on Queen Anne who could not be here today. I am fortunate.
Thank you.
Sandy and then we'll move into remote speakers.
Hello, city council. Thanks for hearing us speak. My name is Sandy Ha. I live in District 3. I'm a homeowner and a 17-year resident of Seattle. I urge you all to vote no on Council Bills 121052 and 121053. The Seattle Office of Civil Rights did a third-party assessment of these bills and they advise against passing these bills. They violate the Seattle Surveillance Ordinance 125376. And I ask you, in what way implementing these bills would actually sustain the commitment of this council to uphold the Surveillance Ordinance? What has been shown with RTCC is inconclusive evidence of it actually preventing serious felony and related crimes. It's cost and resource-intensive, which means both money and environmental costs, energy to apply...
Thank you very much. Our next three remote speakers. Go ahead.
We've got four in-person, six remotes. I am... And we've got a council member who has a hard stop at 7 o'clock and there could be others that I don't know about. So my plan is to have everybody speak, please, and then we'll go right into our items of business.
All right, we're going to go with the first three remote speakers, Jacob Sanchez-Baca, followed by June Freeman and then Oysen Gunning. Go ahead, Jacob.
Yep.
Okay, Jacob, press star 6. While you're looking at that, we're going to move on to June Freeman. Go ahead. Oh, here we go, Jacob. I think I see you. Go ahead. Star 6. Okay, we'll move to June Freeman and then Oysen Gunning. Go ahead, June.
My name is June. I'm a District 3 resident. So many commenters have clearly explained how this premature surveillance expansion is locally unstudied, that surveillance cameras do not reduce crime and that this surveillance is really profoundly dangerous in a time of federal invasion, forced disappearances and the criminalization of basic healthcare. On a personal note, the proposed camera placement in and around Cal Anderson would surveil me from shortly after I walk out my door. I would be watched in real time when I walk through the west side of the park to the grocery store or to the farmer's market and when I sit in the park with my friends and my community. That's a place where I feel safe and which is important to me. And I just, I want you to think about whether any of the council members would want that for yourself. Please note, no.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Oysen Gunning, who will be followed by Jacob Sanchez-Baca. Go ahead, Oysen.
Hi, my name is Ashin Gunning. I live in D3, right by Garfield High School. I'm a high school teacher. And I, just like everyone else here, I'm calling to express extreme disapproval at this expansion of the RTCC. Nobody wants this. This is the kind of thing that, once you open this door, it's incredibly hard to roll back. Once you set up security cameras, it's very hard to undo that. And as everyone else has said, especially in the context of ICE raids, federal invasions of cities, deeply irresponsible. If you think Mike Solan's SPD is going to say no when ICE comes knocking, asking for surveillance data, I've got a bridge over the moon I cut to sell you. I also, I guess, would just, as other people have said about the placement of these things, this is going to be directly outside my front door. Every time, as the last commenter said, every time I leave my house, I'm going to be on camera. And I would note that it's not in front of any of your houses. So how would you feel if I sat outside your house and filmed you every day? And, oh, I promise I'll delete it after 30 days. Vote no.
Okay, our next speaker will be Zoe Dahl, followed by Alberto Alvarez. Go ahead, Zoe.
Hello, my name is Zoe Dahl. I'm here to strongly oppose the expansion of surveillance in our city. As many of my neighbors have already expressed, we know that ICE has and will continue to use these cameras to hunt down and harm our already vulnerable neighbors. In light of yesterday's Supreme Court decision, expanding surveillance will only open the door to increased racial profiling and put our immigrant, BIPOC and low-income communities at even greater risk. This proposal does not make us safer. Surveillance does not stop crime. Supporting our citizens does. People need housing and healthcare and community resources, not more cameras watching their every single move. There could not be a worse time for Seattle to rush through such an incredibly dangerous policy. And if this council truly wants to protect its people, the path forward is not expanded surveillance. It's stronger protection, greater accountability and investment in community support.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Alberto Alvarez, followed by our last remote speaker, Sean Isam. Go ahead, Alberto.
Thank you. Council, now surveillance tools are already being used to persecute people across the nation. No promise or guarantee can protect our communities. Only stopping this expansion can prevent it from being weaponized. It is a fact that the administration is already kidnapping our immigrant neighbors, attacking the rights of the LGBT and soon, very soon, the freedoms of women. Abortion care and trans care patients will fall victim to bounty hunter laws from the other states. Telling entire communities that our city will endanger their freedom is inhumane and discriminatory. This council is happy to say a lot and do nothing to help communities who are in crisis as of this very moment. Stop expanding mass surveillance. Stop serving up our city to a fascist takeover. Have a day.
Thank you. Our last remote speaker is Sean Isam. Go ahead, Sean.
Hello, my name is Sean Isam. Good afternoon, council members. I live in Rob Stockes District. You all ignored our outcry to keep the SPD's less-lethal weapon ban in place the last time I spoke. Today, unlike other speakers, I am not here to plead with you. You need to vote no on CB 121052 and CB 121053. ICE and DHS have already been kidnapping our state and cities' citizens from the federal courthouse down on Second Avenue and hauling them down to the Northwest Detention Center in Tacoma until they can be flown out of the King County Airport on multiple weekly deportation flights across the street from the Museum of Flight. If you can't acknowledge that this will be used to expand this current process, you're either ignorant or you don't care. And either of those options should disqualify you from your current position on the city council. The data is not on the side of this proposal. Your constituents are not on the side of this proposal.
We'll now move back to in-person speakers.
Jody, I believe we have one more speaker. It's Kirk Robbins and then we can move into in-person.
I'm sorry, I don't know Kirk Robbins, but if there's a Kirk Robbins out there, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Kirk Robbins from District 6. I am addressing Agenda Item 6, which involves environmental protection. It seems like calling 160-foot poles with nets between them is not routine. It is not maintenance. And yet, it is exempt from environmental consideration on the pretext of it being routine maintenance. I watched the hearing. I couldn't understand why the committee ignored this after having it been brought to their attention by one of the commentators. There are treaties, federal treaties, protecting birds. There is an exemption required from the FAA for this matter. I can't really expect the federal government to be proactive in matters like this. But I think that environmental protection is more than just a chore. It's more than something that kicks in when you're dealing with a federal superfund designation or gas stoves. I think that you, go get back to taking this seriously and think of it as a duty rather than a chore. Thank you.
Okay, we'll now move into in-person speakers. We have Timothy Kitchen, A.L., Tiffany Burks and then Coco Weber. Timothy?
Hi there, council member, members, everyone. I've met some of you before. My name is Timothy Kitchen. I'm from Fremont. I've served as president of Fremont Neighbourhood Council, president of student body for UW-Seattle and Bible Sunday Club president in high school. So most of you campaign on evidence-based policy. I ask you, keep your promise and let the pilot program complete and be analyzed as intended. Voting yes is a betrayal of your evidence-first campaign promises. This is personal. My family is part Hispanic. I'm basically terrified that kids in my family who look Hispanic will be deported to death camps. Expanding a surveillance dramatically increases that risk. In the last two weeks, Trump tried to illegally deport 600 Latino kids to a South American country, the same country my family is from. One member of my family, while in their home South American country, was told by a gang to join or die. They were shot at by this gang, could literally hear the bullets snapping by their heads as they fled. So they fled to join US family here. Trump would like nothing more than to see my Hispanic family murdered. Trump does not do due process. No law can, no law that we pass can protect us from possible federal fascist access.
A.L.
Okay, let's get straight to the point. Essentially, today you are voting for a surveillance system that will track us each and every minute of our lives. We will have our movements documented in Axon cameras using AI that is refreshed each month to track us. They will have 30 days to track us. And this data will be made available to ICE. It will be made available to the feds and it will be made available to Trump, who will be able to use this information to track down anyone they consider a dissenter. This is criminal. This is a surveillance state that you are installing today and you are looking to expand it even further than this. This is ridiculous. And for a fact, this is enabling a Nazi organization. This is enabling people that are taking our neighbors out of their homes. This is enabling people to be stolen out of their places they call home. And we will not forget each of your names. Doesn't matter if you're temporary. Doesn't matter if you're on the way out.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
We have Tiffany and then Coco.
Hello, Seattle City Council. My name is Tiffany and I am the advocacy organizer for the Washington Immigrant Solidarity Network, WISEN for short. for the Washington Immigrant Solidarity Network, WISEN for short. I'm also a Seattle resident, a womaness, Black feminist, and freedom fighter. I am proud to call Seattle my home, and I'm even more proud to stand in opposition to expanding the use of CCTV and surveillance technology. And I haven't even heard one person speaking in support, so I think it's a no-brainer to vote no on this. Surveillance capitalism is not going to save us. SPD has only started using this program three months ago, so there's no justification for the expansion. And in my time as an activist over the last decade, I have attended over 200 protests, and I have never felt comfortable or safe with a drone camera or surveillance technology at those actions. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Coco, and I am a teacher in Seattle. I live in District 3. I teach in District 4. And before I begin, I want to say I hope you honor the people who are our most vulnerable community members, who are trans, who are immigrants, who are queer, disabled, and who are putting their lives at risk coming here, being on TV to say, please think of our lives under a federal government that is trying to make them go away. Now, I want to speak as a teacher. I work with children with learning disabilities. I work with our most, our most emerging students in our schools, so kids with autism, multilingual learners, immigrant families. And you can imagine what it's like to be a kid who's not doing too well in school. Well, I do know because I used to work in the King County, I volunteered in the King County Jail as a tutor, supporting people getting their GED. So when you have people in your county jail who all need their GED, we are failing. Seattle's own rapport said in the early-
Thank you.
... to prevent youth violence, you need preschool, you need access to healthcare, you need access to school programs. This guy here with the-
Thank you very much for your-
... to hang out with, to hang out in. So true community safety, please no doubt. True community safety-
Thank you very much. We have to be fair to everybody, so please.
... in your children. Thank you.
That was our last registered speaker who's present.
I just have to say thank you very much, everybody, for coming out and for being so respectful to each other and for everybody sticking in there to get through all of the, so that we can hear all of the speakers. So we will now proceed with our items of business. So public comment is now closed, and we will proceed. So, hold on a second, I have to scroll back up here. Okay, if there is no objection, the agenda, no, if there's no objection, the introduction and referral calendar will be adopted. Hearing no objection, the introduction and referral calendar is adopted. If there's no objection, the agenda will be adopted. Hearing none, the agenda is adopted. We'll now consider the proposed consent calendar, and the items on the consent calendar are: the minutes of September 2, 2025, Council Bill 121070, which is payment to the bills, 19, and 19 appointments from the City Council. Are there any items council members would like to have removed from today's consent calendar? All right, seeing none, I move to adopt the consent calendar. Is there a second? Second. It's been moved and seconded to adopt the consent calendar. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Kettle?
Aye.
Councilmember Rink?
Yes.
Councilmember Rivera?
Aye.
Councilmember Saka?
Aye.
Councilmember Solomon?
Aye.
Councilmember Strauss?
Aye.
Councilmember Hollingsworth?
Yes.
Councilmember Juarez?
Aye.
Council President Nelson?
Aye.
Nine in favor and none opposed.
Okay, the consent calendar items are adopted. Will the clerk please affix my signature to the minutes and legislation on the consent calendar on my behalf? And will the clerk please read Item 1 into the record?
The report of the City Council, turn to Item 1, Council Bill 121065, related to City Employment Authorizing Execution of a Collective Bargaining Agreement between the City of Seattle and the Seattle Fire Chiefs Association, IAFF, Local 2898.
I move to pass Council Bill 121065. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, this bill authorizes the collective bargaining agreement, CBA, between the City of Seattle and the Seattle Fire Chiefs Association, IAFF, Local 2898, effective from January 1, 2022, through December 31, 2026. It implements a retroactive five-year agreement on wages, benefits, hours, and other working conditions between January 1, 2022, and December 31, 2026. The agreement affects 31 employees and includes $4.73 million in appropriations for current year and retroactive payments, which will be included in the 2025 year-end supplemental. There's also 2.75 to be included in the 2026 proposed budget to meet the needs of the CBA. The wage increases are 4% in 2022, 5% in 2023, 4% in 2024, 4% in 2025, and 5% in 2026. All right. Originally, I was going to have central staff up here to present the legislation, but due to our time constraints, I will just simply ask if there are any questions, and if so, we can, we can suspend the rules and have central staff come to the table. Go ahead, Councilmember Kettle.
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to add, as Chair of the Public Safety, you know, I work with the Seattle Fire Department. It's really important to ensure that we do have these labor agreements. On the rank and file with Local 27, we've been set. But for the senior leadership, it's been quite a while, and it's time to get this reset, and it's important to do so. And I also should note, this is long delayed. There's different reasons for that, but it's also delayed over a period where we had high inflation as well. So these are some of the dynamics that are in play, but it's really important, bottom line, to support the senior leadership of the Seattle Fire Department. So thank you, Council President, and I support this bill.
Thank you for those comments. Are there any further comments? All right, I'm not seeing any. Will the clerk please call the roll on the passage of the bill?
Councilmember Kettle?
Aye.
Councilmember Rink?
Yes.
Councilmember Rivera?
Aye.
Councilmember Saka?
Aye.
Councilmember Solomon?
Aye.
Councilmember Strauss?
Aye.
Councilmember Hollingsworth?
Yes.
Councilmember Juarez?
Aye.
Council President Nelson?
Aye.
Nine in favor and none opposed.
The bill passes, and the chair will sign it. Will the clerk please affix my signature to the legislation on my behalf? And will the clerk please read Item 2 into the record?
The report of the Public Safety Committee, turn to Item 2, Council Bill 121052, related to Surveillance Technology Implementation, authorizing approval of uses and accepting the 2025 updated Surveillance Impact Report and 2025 Executive Overview for the Seattle Police Department's Use of Closed-Circuit Television Camera Systems. The committee recommends the bill passes amended.
Okay, Councilmember Kettle, as Chair of the committee, you recognize in order to provide the committee report.
Thank you, Council President. I first wanted to say thank you for everyone who's come for public comment. In addition to that, we've had a number of emails, letters, and other input received by the council, whether out and about. It's basically an everyday experience. And I thank you all for that. Colleagues, Council Bill 121052's path to get to this point today started last year with our automatic license plate reader, ALPR legislation. We received a great amount of input that led to major amendments to the bill. And then these amendments and that process also were influential in drafting of the original CCTV and the RTCC, the Real-Time Crime Center, bills, which was further amended by the council last year. The result being CCTV and Real-Time Crime Center bills that were Seattle CCTV and Real-Time Crime Center bills that were representing Seattle values and the Seattle way. Our ALPR, CCTV, and RTCC bills are not standard bills. They are not standard bills. They do not reflect what you see in other jurisdictions across the country, and they are definitely not red state, red county America bills. They are Seattle bills. Council Bill 121052 has had many points made against it. Some have been integrated into the bill as amendments. And again, these amendments, you know, do generate from the comments that we receive. This is across the board, by the way, not just for these two bills that we're addressing today. And this shows up in different ways. For example, last week, we had some commenters, and they were talking about Flock. Flock, Flock, Flock. At no time was Flock part of this. At no time, I had many people say, hey, you should look into Flock. I said, thank you, but no, thank you. We never had Flock, despite the fact that these comments were coming at us. And there was also a point that any and every sworn officer in the Seattle Police Department could then turn this information over to federal authorities. I have a letter here from the Chief of Police that speaks to the Real-Time Crime Center systems. And there it says, there's only 28 people who have access to FUSIS, which is the system, the primary software supporting the Real-Time Crime Center and its camera feeds. Of those, four ITD employees, 23 are Real-Time Crime Center analysis and video specialists, and one is a sworn member of the service. One is a sworn member of the service, Captain Jim Britt, who manages the Real-Time Crime Center. All 28 people have been backgrounded and have obtained CJIS certification. I raise that because this is an example of how we are doing this, as opposed to some of the characterizations. In addition, you know, there's been talk about facial recognition and the like. We do not have facial recognition. The Seattle, City of Seattle and SPD do not allow any facial recognition software under any circumstances. This has been something that's come from the mayor, from the Chief of Police, Captain Britt, but also from us in the council. So DHS, ICE-
There will be no disruptions from the audience. Please continue. That's called, that's disruptive behavior. Please refrain.
DHS, ICE, and federal government will have, another claim is DHS, ICE, and federal government will have access to any data collected by the cameras, including ALPR and video. Axon is out of state, so it's not protected by Washington Shield laws. DHS has no access to SPD data regarding civil matters such as immigration unless the federal government subpoenas footage from the vendor, which is something that we have. Not, not. Under federal law, I should add, the owner of the data that owns that data, and thus the law applies to the owner, not where the data is stored. This is another example where this comes up again and again, but it's different. Data from the CCTV will be shared to the fusion centers. In that same letter from the chief, he talks about there's only one sworn officer there, and he does not have access to the data. Captain Britt is the only sworn officer who has access to that data. And I think that is really important to, again, note. To the point kind of mentioned, CCTV is used for crimes, but immigration status is now classified as a crime according to the federal government. Executive order is not law. Plus, the Keep Washington Act 2019 is quite clear about this in terms of immigration crimes, and so we are covered in this sense. How long does SPD retain the video footage? And by the way, if there was some piece to that, we do have an amendment today that we'll address. The data is on the camera. It stays there for five days, and then it's overwritten. It's only pulled, it's only-
You are engaging in disruptive behavior. This is your, this, the second or the third warning.
It's only been pulled when, when cued by criminal activity or, you know, inquiries from police officers and/or dispatch. Talk about cameras will be on residential streets and seen to people's homes and the like. This has come up again and again, and I just wanted to note, the mayor has said this, and I have said this. There will be no direct link between the Real-Time Crime Center and residential uses, residence, residential locations. There is none. The only thing that is being done is a registry, which is essentially a block watch program. So, for example, if something was to happen in a part of the city, and then the Real-Time Crime Center, along with dispatch, is saying, hey, we have this happening. Normally, detectives, officers would go out, door knock around the neighborhood, saying, excuse me, do you have cameras or anything that you can add to this situation? The registry just allows for the Real-Time Crime, basically SPD, to then go to that, to that home, to say, hey, excuse me, do you have that? And then that would come in just as in any other regular instance. This is not anything related to the Real-Time Crime Center and its linkages to CCTV, ALPR, and the like. I also get, you know, this awesome comes up, these other locations, you know, the Oakland example, which was totally different. Austin, we noted that they had Flock cameras and very different situation than what we have. And their laws are not written like ours. And I should note, and this is very important, their governor is Governor Abbott. Their Attorney General is Attorney General Paxton. Very different from Governor Ferguson and Attorney General Brown. Over the course of my time on the council, I've communicated with both individuals on public safety. They are strong on public safety. They are strong in their support of keeping Washington safe. So these are some of the pieces that we had, you know, in terms of what is happening. I also note, you know, there's no proven impact or, you know, facts on the ground. In the rollout for the program, it shows clearly an incident where a, someone pistol-whipped. Pistol-whipped somebody at 100th and Aurora, and then had shots fired. Fortunately, a year ago, that person would have gotten away. That person casually just walked, got on a bike, probably not his own, went south on Aurora. Again, a year ago, that person would have gotten away. But instead, he was noted turning right west onto 97th. That information allowed that this individual, after a series of events, to be arrested essentially on the spot, as it worked out. A lot of times, people think that if we have 100 instances of crime, we have 100 different people doing it. That's not the case. It's going to be 10 people doing 10 types of crime. This person who so casually pistol-whipped somebody and had shots fired, and then just walked, got on a bike and gone, Avenue, Aurora Avenue, headed south, that person has done it before and would be doing it again. But because of the Real-Time Crime Center and that CCTV camera, that person was arrested. And that, not, and next time, that, that person could have died. That could, the person could have died. And I've seen this also in my interaction with people, you know, the community in Belltown, where this was something where we had deep impact with the CCTV cameras. And so, and then just overnight, or yesterday, you know, in the CID, the Real-Time Crime Center had video of an attack of an individual, 44, an individual who was stabbed by a 44-year-old man. Here's something additional to this. This is just from the CID over the last 24 hours. This information is going to allow for a greater prosecution, better prosecution of this person who had stabbed this 44-year-old man. Public comment has already ended. So I just want to make that there's been many points made by community, and I appreciate that. I truly welcome them, because a lot of them have been, the number of times have been, you know, integrated through the legislation directly or through amendment. They are not, however, universal in community. I have a letter here that says, community members are overwhelmingly against expansion. That is not the case. A decade ago, a decade ago, a decade ago-
Will the people attending this meeting, you are engaging in disruptive behavior, which is slowing down and impeding our ability to do our jobs. So please, silence in the chambers.
A decade ago, a decade ago, the City Council transitioned from being a council at-large to our district council. The first term of this was after the 2015 elections, which was really a transition period from the at-large to the, to the district model. And then the second term was after the '29 election, which included the pandemic. So it didn't really get off, off the ground, and due to the, you know, the impacts of the pandemic. This '23 election and this term of the council is fully a district council from campaign throughout its term. And this is important because the district representatives, myself included, my colleagues, we're in district every day. We are interacting every day with individuals and groups regarding this issue plus others. Just last week, I was in Inner Bay, you know, talking to an individual related to problems that they have there. Every single one of those 24 people, those two dozen people, would have been happy to have a CCTV program in Inner Bay. So this idea that community members are overwhelmingly against expansion is false, because each of us engage, and each of us has these areas where they need support. And these are some of the things that come into play. You know, bottom line here is, you know, because I hear these different things regarding the community, but the Seattle City Council is, in essence now, the Seattle Community City Council, because we engage with community in our districts on a daily, daily basis. Lastly, Council Bill 121052, and I'll add Council Bill 12- Lastly, Council Bill 121052, and I'll add Council Bill 121053, are not a pair standing alone or with just the ALPR legislation, but rather as part of our Integrated Strategic Framework Plan as we look to create a safe base in our city and do it the right way with constitutional policing. We've done this, and this came up in committee this morning of all the bills that we've been doing. But the thing is, these bills are designed to come together and support each other and to support our communities. So these bills that we see today are part of that effort. The technology bills are part of that effort. And so, colleagues, I ask for your support.
Thank you very much. Are there any comments before we go on to the amendments? Seeing none. Let's see. It's been moved and seconded to -- well, go ahead. I--
Yes. Council President, I move to amend Council Bill 121052 as amended in Amendment A.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to amend. The bill is presented on Amendment A. Councilmember Kettle is sponsor. You're recognized in order to address it.
Thank you, Council President. This amendment is a amendment sponsored by myself, but co-sponsored by my colleague, Councilmember Rink. And again, to the point of listening to public comment, the amendment would -- is intended to address any future circumstances in which, despite our efforts, Seattle CCTV data is demanded by or released to federal authorities for civil immigration matter. In this instance, SPD would pause the CCTV program in order for the city to consider its legal options and the policy choices underpinning the CCTV program. So this amendment would authorize a 60-day pause in the systems for the following circumstances. One, the city or its vendor received a warrant, subpoena, or court order for Seattle CCTV data in a federal civil immigration enforcement matter. Or two, the city or its vendor releases CCTV data for use in a federal civil immigration enforcement matter. Colleagues, again, this is -- relates to comments that have been made and things that we know from our experience and things that I've been speaking at in terms of Public Safety Committee, in terms of federal law enforcement and National Guard. And so I ask for your support for this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. Would Councilmember Rink, as co-sponsor, would you like to say a few words as well?
Thank you, Council President. Colleagues, this is an important amendment, and thankful for the partnership from Councilmember Kettle on it. As stated, if data is released pertaining to a subpoena or warrant for a specifically a civil-federal immigration matter, we will be able to have an off-ramp to try and protect our constituents and community. The pause of CCTV camera systems for 60 days will allow us to deliberate and resolve this issue, which may include the ending of the CCTV program. We can't have public safety without public trust and oversight of these technologies, and we need the ability to leave the program if it is not intending its intended -- if it is not serving its intended purpose, or in this case, being utilized and weaponized against us. I encourage your support on this amendment. It's incredibly important to try and create an off-ramp. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any comments? Okay, Councilmember Rivera.
Thank you, Council President, and thank you, Councilmember Kettle and Councilmember Rink for bringing this amendment forward. As Councilmember Kettle said in his opening remarks, we have not passed any of these legislation without putting guardrails in place. In fact, when we started a -- excuse me, ALPR, I myself proffered an amendment to make sure we put guardrails around that, including limiting access to one permanent individual in real -- in the Real-Time Crime Center who could be authorized to read the LR -- APLR, and also making sure that any request to search, and I'm reading from the actual amendment, historical reads by any officer must be accompanied by a written request identifying the requester, the reason for the search, including the reasonable suspicion or probable cause, and the associated case number, and submitted to an authorized individual to perform the search. And we did this to put guardrails in place because these are technologies that have unintended or could have unintended consequences. And I was very concerned about someone from a different state who would cross to Seattle to get services, including reproductive services and gender-affirming care, to be subjected to some kind of, you know, ask from a different state for information. And we did not want to -- we want to protect individuals who come here to get care, and we don't want to be in a situation where we're sharing this type of information. Similarly, this amendment that Councilmember Kettle is proffering and Councilmember Rink is co-sponsoring is putting very important guardrails because we know what's happening at the federal level and because we don't want to have the unintended consequences of this being used against our residents here in Seattle, our immigrant residents, our LGBTQ and trans residents, and our vulnerable populations. And so I will be supporting this amendment, and I very much am grateful for -- I don't sit on the Public Safety Committee, so this is my first opportunity to vote on this, but I am very grateful that this amendment has come forward to continue to put guardrails around these tools that we are using, that are helping with our public safety efforts in combination, and that also, you know, we're taking these things seriously. We're taking the concern seriously, and we're making sure to put guardrails around these things. And making sure that if there is a reach out from the federal government, that we're able to put a stop to the program and then reassess what we need to do next. So thank you.
Thank you for that. I see -- Councilmember Rink, you have your hand up. Are there any other comments? I'm not seeing any. Go ahead, please.
Thank you, Council President. I wanted to offer an important clarification on this amendment, particularly for the listening public today. This amendment, I think, marks an important improvement to the bill because it does provide this -- this potential off-ramp, or at least an immediate pause to the program for at least 60 days. But it is only specific if there is a subpoena or warrant for a civil-federal immigration matter. So just specific to immigration and not other matters, not all subpoenas or warrants. So I just want to clarify that for folks who are listening today. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much for that. If I am not seeing any other amendments, I mean, questions, would the -- I'm not seeing any? Okay. Would the clerk please call the roll on the -- on Amendment A?
Councilmember Kettle?
Aye.
Councilmember Rink?
Yes.
Councilmember Rivera?
Aye.
Councilmember Saka?
Aye.
Councilmember Solomon?
Aye.
Councilmember Strauss?
Aye.
Councilmember Hollingsworth?
Yes.
Councilmember Juarez?
Aye.
Council President Nelson?
Aye.
Nine in favor, none opposed.
The motion -- amendment passes, and I'm not going to say the chair will sign it. Amendment A passes. Would you please continue to -- the following amendment? I believe that is Councilmember Rink. Yep.
Yes. I move to amend Council Bill 121052 as presented on Amendment B.
Second.
The -- the motion has been seconded, so please go ahead and describe it.
Thank you, Council President. The -- this Amendment B requires that the CCTV system pilot evaluation must determine if there is an association with a reduction to crime. This amendment was drafted in consultation and approval from the Office of the Inspector General and the researchers at University of Pennsylvania. If the pilot evaluation does not determine an association, then the executive will need to consider in compliance with the SIR policies discontinuing the pilot project. So, colleagues, I know in committee we had seen a version of this requiring a -- instead, rather than association, a causal relationship. But we've reworked this amendment, and to my understanding and in our work, the Office of Inspector General, UPenn, have both accepted these amendments as a part of their monitoring and evaluation process. This amendment would include five broad areas of exploration in the evaluation of these pilot programs and requires the evaluation to demonstrate any association between these pilots and a reduction in crime. In order to maintain accountability to the public, who are funding these pilots, and to the communities that will receive the negative impacts of over-surveillance, I am asking for your support for an evaluation that answers this simple question. Did this pilot program accomplish its goals in reducing crime? Evaluation is important, as evidenced and supported by the memo and letter provided by the CPC, and I ask for your support on this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Kettle.
Thank you, Council President, and I thank Councilmember Rink for her amendment. This is similar to the amendment that we had in committee that failed there. I recognize, too, that the consultation with the OIG and UPenn as part of the evaluation of the program, and essentially the overlap that was already there with the UPenn program and what is included into this amendment. The challenge, as we had in committee in today, is that the language is already saying, "SPD will evaluate the efficacy of the CCTV implementation through standard performance measures already in use: violent crime rate, Priority One response time, patrol coverage when not responding to calls, parentheses, over/under policing, equity, perceptions of trust, perceptions of safety. Successful implementation of this suite of technologies, the CCTV, the RTCC, and enhanced ALPR, will be indicated by a decrease in violent crime, Property One response time, no increase or decline in measures of police overpresence, measure of disparate impact, and an increase in perceptions of trust and safety." That is what we already have. It is broader, and so, again, I recognize and I appreciate the amendment, but I think it's better to have this broader cast in terms of the evaluation that we have for this -- for this bill. So my recommendation is to vote no, and I shall be voting no. Thank you.
Are there additional comments? All right, seeing none. Would the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of Amendment B?
Councilmember Kettle?
No.
Councilmember Rink?
Yes.
Councilmember Rivera?
No.
Councilmember Saka?
No.
Councilmember Solomon?
No.
Councilmember Strauss?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilmember Hollingsworth?
Yes.
Councilmember Juarez?
No.
Council President Nelson?
No.
Three in favor, six opposed.
The motion fails, and Amendment B is not adopted. Go ahead. Welcome to continue with Amendment C.
Thank you. I move to amend Council Bill 121052 as presented on Amendment C.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to amend the bill as presented on Amendment C. Councilmember Rink, as sponsor, you're recognized in order to address it.
Thank you, Council President. Amendment C would prohibit the use of the CCTV system beyond July 1st, 2028, unless SPD submits to the council and the council passes an ordinance that includes an SIR and executive overview that reflect the approval of a new acquisition pursuant to surveillance ordinances. Colleagues, in the midst of our budget shortfall and understanding the inherent risks of increasing surveillance in our city, we need to remember that this is a pilot and not a fully operational program. The proof of concept is still yet to be seen, and in the spirit of ensuring community engagement and good process, I would like to see, and hope you agree, that we should see a new ordinance, SIR, and executive overview if this pilot is chosen to be extended. We should not be taking shortcuts and jumping from pilots to full programs without going through this process to ensure that community voices are heard. And for these reasons, I ask for your support. Thank you.
Are there any additional comments? Okay, seeing none. Councilmember Kettle, sorry.
Thank you, Council President. Again, I thank Councilmember Rink. Obviously, we're going to be doing this review, as just noted in the past, amendment discussion related to the OIG and UPenn. And again, this is something that's already covered in the bill. And so here's the challenge, as noted, you know, with, you know, having a -- beyond July 1st, 2028, we need to ensure that this is as we go through this process. Because as we know from sitting on this dais, timelines and schedules are not what we think they are. We know this from, you know, what we're trying to do right now with the comprehensive plan, different pieces. So there is already in place a review and how to do this going to transition from pilot to regular if successful. Having the date as stated would be a problem and create a opportunity where we would not have coverage, despite the fact that it may be shown to be beneficial across the board as made it noted in the -- in the previous amendment discussion. So again, I appreciate the piece. I think it's already covered. My recommendation is to vote no. Thank you.
Additional comments? Okay. Not seeing any. Would the clerk please call the roll on Amendment C?
Councilmember Kettle?
No.
Councilmember Rink?
Yes.
Councilmember Rivera?
No.
Councilmember Saka?
Aye.
Councilmember Solomon?
Aye.
Councilmember Strauss?
No.
Councilmember Hollingsworth?
Yes.
Councilmember Juarez?
No.
Council President Nelson?
No.
Four in favor, five opposed.
The motion fails, and Amendment C is not adopted. Moving on to Amendment D. Councilmember Strauss.
Thank you, Council President. I move Amendment D to Council Bill 120 -- or 121052.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to amend. The bill is presented on Amendment D. So Councilmember Strauss, you're recognized as sponsor to address it.
Thank you. I want to thank everyone for having this thoughtful conversation today, bringing forward these amendments and the public comment that we've received. I'll provide comments now during -- regarding my amendment -- during the amendment process. My comments will be on this amendment, the underlying bill, and the following bill. I'm putting forward this amendment today to reduce the expansion of CCTV to only the stadium district. There are good reasons for the limited surveillance pilot in areas like the stadium district, which could become targets during the World Cup. And we need to take more time to plan and review further expansion of using this technology. I'm not against surveillance technology as it has its role. Our central district resident that I'm not seeing anymore, who worked for both parties, said it better than me. I'm not a no to expansion, but I am -- we need more time on the underlying bill if we expand beyond just the stadium district. What gives me pause are the actions taken by the federal government in the last few months and weeks. While we wait to receive the legal determination from the courts regarding federal actions, I know in my heart that their actions are not in line with the North Star of our democracy's founders. Councilmember Kettle has made important changes to this bill, as has Councilmember Rink. We are not in fill-in-the-blank city or state that will willingly target Americans. We are in Seattle. I do trust Chief Sean Barnes. I trust him to protect Seattleites from all threats, and I trust him -- I trust his use of the Real-Time Crime Center to address criminal activity while limiting unintended consequences. With that -- with this said, I believe expansion to the stadium district today is prudent, and we should take more time before further expansion. I ask for your support on my amendment.
Thank you very much. Are there any -- Councilmember Hollingsworth?
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, Councilmember Strauss, for bringing this amendment. I was -- I learned about this amendment today, reading it. Would have loved to engage in a conversation regarding the two areas in my district. Had the opportunity to engage with people on Capitol Hill and our central district as well. I know we had people that came here today from those neighborhood -- well, a couple neighborhoods from central district and also predominantly Capitol Hill. In committee, I voted yes on this and brought some of the amendments, which I heard from concerns regarding arterials, also some clinics that were concerned about some extra oversight of security for their clients, and that's why we brought some amendments to try to find a delicate balance for those. I will be supporting this today, given the reason-- I will be supporting this today, given the reason why if we're not supporting any type of new CCTV cameras for this legislation, then we shouldn't be considering any of them. We shouldn't take out one neighborhood over the other, in my opinion. That's very different than others, so I won't be supporting this today, but thank you, Councilmember Strauss.
Are there additional comments? Okay, will the clerk please call the role on Amendment D?
Councilmember Kettle?
No.
Councilmember Rink?
Yes.
Councilmember Rivera?
No.
Councilmember Saka?
No.
Councilmember Solomon?
No.
Councilmember Strauss?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollingsworth?
No.
Councilmember Juarez?
No.
Council President Nelson?
No.
Two in favor, seven opposed.
The motion fails and Amendment D is not adopted. Moving on, we will now entertain Amendment E.
Thank you, Council President. I move to amend Council Bill 121052 as presented on Amendment E.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to amend the legislation as seen, as presented on Amendment E. Councilmember Rink, as sponsor, you're recognized in order to address it.
Thank you, Council President. And in the spirit of the intent of Councilmember Hollingsworth's amendment presented in the Public Safety Committee, our office wanted to introduce a prohibition of CCTV cameras similarly on non-arterial streets in the Capitol Hill nightlife area. We understood that the intent of Councilmember Strauss's amendment, deeply appreciate him putting it forward, and we want to limit the negative impacts of surveillance as much as possible, which includes removing these from non-arterial streets, as there is an expectation of privacy in and around parks in the neighborhood. We want to ensure that Seattle remains a safe space for our communities, particularly those who come from historically marginalized and underserved communities, such as throughout Capitol Hill, our beloved Gaborhood. Thank you, and I ask for your support.
Thank you. Councilmember Hollingsworth?
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, Councilmember Rink, for bringing this, brought a similar amendment to central district. Fully support this amendment based on arterials in the designated spot in which SPD has identified where they feel the cameras would be best situated, and I fully support this, so thank you.
Are there additional comments? Will the clerk please call the role on the passage of Amendment E?
Councilmember Kettle?
No.
Councilmember Kettle?
No.
Thank you. Councilmember Rink?
Yes.
Councilmember Rivera?
No.
Councilmember Saka?
Aye.
Councilmember Solomon?
No.
Councilmember Strauss?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollingsworth?
Yes.
Councilmember Juarez?
No.
Council President Nelson?
No.
Four in favor, five opposed.
The motion fails and Amendment E is not adopted. Are there any final comments on the bill as amended? Councilmember, I don't know who had the hand up first, but I'll call on Councilmember Solomon. Go ahead.
Thank you very much, Council President. I do want to acknowledge the public commentary that we've received today. I want to acknowledge the emails that we've received on this matter, and I understand the concerns and the fear. It's real, especially given what our federal government is doing. It's real. I understand that. That being said, I'm probably one of the few people on this dais who understands the technology, the Real-Time Crime Center itself, the function of it, having been in a similar role as an indication of warning specialist, okay? Looking at real-time events and responding in real time to direct resources to what was happening in real time. That was the world I lived. So you don't just have two intel guys up here, you got three. So again, I understand the technology, and I also understand, you know, the sentiment that, you know, this is not going to prevent crime. You're right. Cameras are not a crime prevention tool. They're an investigative tool.
Call for action.
Hey, excuse me. When an officer, or when the police department is looking at what cases to investigate, what cases to assign to an investigator, they're looking at, is it solvable, right? And how do you get something that's solvable? You need evidence. You need a credible witness, you need fingerprints, or you need video surveillance. If it's not solvable, it doesn't get assigned. So when I hear folks say, "This isn't going to do anything," well, tell that to the family whose house has gotten broken into, because while the stats say that things are getting better, stats don't mean nothing when it's your house has gotten broken into, or when it's your neighbor that's been shot at. And I hear that from the people in my neighborhood. I hear that from my community, who are the ones who are saying, "Yeah, if we had cameras, that could help," right? Understand the point taken, that, yes, there are the prevention measures that we need to look at. I agree. But I also agree that we need investigative tools, so that we can hold folks accountable for their behavior, right? There's a lot of work to say, because, again, you know, given the background that I'm coming from, but I'm confident that with the safeguards that have been put in place, this can be an effective tool to help us address some of the violent crime and property crime that we do have in the city, and hold folks accountable for the crimes that have been committed. So that, thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Rink?
Thank you, Council President. I want to first thank the 105 people who came out to provide public comment today. That was my rough tally. I might be wrong, so don't quote me on that, but it was definitely over 100 folks who came out today to provide public comment, both in person and virtually, so thank you for your engagement in local government. When this pilot was initially approved last year, it's fair to say that we were in a different moment. This was sold to community as a pilot program, but here we are, just months after that so-called pilot program started, and the mayor is asking for around 400 more cameras across our city to be used for 24/7 police surveillance. Can anyone on this dais tell me if the initial cameras that council approved are working? Because the answer is no, we have no data. An anecdote, maybe, but the substantive data on crime prevention or solving crimes, because CCTV and RTCC, they've only been up for a couple of months, and we've contracted with the University of Pennsylvania for a study, but they haven't even had a chance to begin that work. Despite that, this bill would expand the program across the city to more neighborhoods. That's not being data-driven, that's being reckless with people's privacy. So why are we rushing to do this when the data we requested hasn't even been collected? And why are we doing this at a time when the Trump administration is using any means necessary to take this exact data to target trans people, immigrants, and people seeking reproductive health care? And we may not have the data, but we have data points from other cities when it comes to breaches in their data systems just over the past couple months. So last night, my colleague on the San Francisco Board of Supervisors alerted me to breaking news that San Francisco Police let out of-state cops run more than 1.6 million illegal searches on their city's automated license plate reader database. 1.6 million searches on their surveillance data, in contradiction to all of their local policies and state laws that purport to shield their citizens. And those snatching up residents' data included agencies in Texas, a state that has put a bounty out on those seeking reproductive health care out of state, the U.S. Immigration and Customs Enforcement, who has used this kind of data across the country to track and target noncriminal immigrants for kidnapping and disappearing people to foreign prison camps. Now, just last month, in Washington, D.C., councilmembers there did not imagine that the outcome of their FUSIS-1 contract is that the Trump administration would use that data to wage war on immigrant communities. Just yesterday, both CNN and the New York Times have reported on delivery drivers in D.C. going into hiding because ICE has been targeting delivery drivers through use of Uber, Grubhub, through data sharing, and showing us, again, how this kind of surveillance and data sharing is continuing to target and marginalize those most vulnerable in our community. They're paying the price of this regime. Now, earlier this year, Denver collected, in Denver, data collected was accessed in an immigration-related searches over 1,400 times. In April, we saw an ALPR operator allowed U.S. Customs and Border Protection access to Illinois license plate camera data, despite being in a state that has the Illinois Trust Act, which is their version of Keep Washington Working, again, state law that protects local governments from being forced to assist in deportation. Jurisdictions like in Riverside County, L.A. County, Orange County, San Diego County, all had their own versions of Keep Washington Working, and their data was still shared with ICE and CBP. And I can continue to talk about Providence, Rhode Island, Grand Rapids, Dearborn, Kalamazoo in Michigan, Redlands in California, Toledo, Ohio, Nashville, Tennessee. Sure, no city has done it exactly the way that we have. We're talking about different contractor providers and different companies, and we all have different safety protocols, but this is happening across the board. Do we know with 100% certainty what happened in each of these cases that caused their systems to fail? Why do we think we're so special? So across, all across the U.S., in other liberal and blue cities where communities live, hoping that their government will serve and protect them, we've seen these data breaches and weaponization of data carry out this unjust deportation and criminalization regime. And now the Trump regime is threatening to send troops into blue cities, as of this morning, I'm sure as we speak. The Trump regime is conducting mass immigration operations through what they're calling Operation Midway Blitz in Chicago, intentionally blaming city, their city's sanctuary laws and their state's sanctuary laws, just like the ones we have here in Washington and Seattle. This is just another example of federal overreach that has already been done, that we've seen in L.A. and D.C. So these tools, CCTV, RTCC, these are the tools that the Trump regime needs to enact their cruel agenda. And we've seen that the federal government can access city surveillance data with or without their permission, and it can do so with ours. And I want to highlight a hypothetical scenario, particularly because Amendment E unfortunately did not go past, meaning that if this goes through and this expansion goes through, there would be cameras on Cal Anderson. Cal Anderson is a known site for a number of protests and demonstrations where people go to express their free, exercise their First Amendment rights. We saw so this year with the No Kings March, and then a subsequent march through the streets in Capitol Hill, like with this year's May Day protests and rally and parade. Under this bill and this expansion, at any point, the federal government can subpoena this data. Even if there's information on the cameras that are only kept for five days, they can still subpoena within those five days. If there's anything that is caught in those cameras, it would be bounced to a server for a 30-day hold. Now, we know the federal government watches demonstrations across the country. They are watching. And so if the federal government subpoenas our data, we must turn it over. And while we, as a city, may not have facial recognition on our cameras, when that video footage goes to them, they can run facial recognition on that data. And that therein lies the issue. But I bring this up because they can charge people with federal crimes, and they did so just in Spokane recently. They charged nine Spokane protesters. They were not charged by city police, they were charged by federal officers for conspiracy to impede officers. These were folks who were just protesting against ICE. So I bring these examples up to color what this could mean. And there is a broad coalition of organizations, trusted institutions, and legislators who see this too and have come out against this. We've heard a lot of discussion about the Community Policing Commission, and I want to highlight a quote from their letter stating that "The expansion of surveillance technology that lacks data establishing its efficacy in the face of community opposition," that we've heard here today, "and when doing so exposes the Seattle community to federal overreach and further misuse of private information, will only sow further mistrust in city government and SPD. The city has just emerged from federal oversight of SPD. This is the time to listen and prioritize community voice in public safety and policing." Yesterday, we received a letter from 18 community organizations, Asian Counseling and Referral Services, One America, Church Council of Greater Seattle, Council of Islamic Relations, Washington, Seattle Indivisible, Friends of Little Saigon, SCPTA, Washington Immigrant Solidarity Network, Puget Sound Sage, Blaine Memorial United Methodist Church, Northwest Immigrant Rights Project, University Congregational UCC, Latino Community Fund of Washington State, Love and Justice Committee of the University Congregational United Church of Christ, Jewish Coalition for Immigrant Justice Northwest, People Power Washington, the CID Coalition, and Who Streets Are Streets. And at the start of this meeting, we received a letter from 17 state legislators, including the leadership of the House Members of Color Caucus, and to quote this letter, quote, "Increasing the surveillance of Washingtonians when we are dealing with unprecedented data breaches of private information at the state level to target our immigrant refugee community members must not be done in haste. As legislators, we stand in support of the Keep Washington Working Act and with all immigrant communities across Washington. The Keep Washington Working Act passed in 2019 and restricts state and local law enforcement agencies from cooperating with federal immigration enforcement, including prohibiting them from asking about immigration status, sharing personal information with federal agents, or detaining individuals for civil immigration violations. Expanding surveillance in our largest city in Washington could undermine the legislative intent of this policy to protect the privacy and civil rights of all Washington residents, to foster trust with our immigrant refugee communities, and to keep communities safer by preventing local resources from being used in federal immigration deportations. This technology and technology similar to it has recently been in the news for its failure to meaningfully and consistently be secured, leading to data breaches that could result in sensitive data being shared with ICE and putting immigrant refugee communities at risk. With the lessons learned from the recent failures at our own level of government to secure similarly sensitive information, it is our ask that you pause the consideration of these bills until both public and legal confidence in their use is established. We simply cannot risk the further victimization of our communities at the hands of a federal administration that shows limited regard for constitutional protections," end quote, and that is from 17 of our state legislators."
Please.
Taking a breath. Continue on, our office's civil rights has come out against these bills.
I ask for you...
Our office's civil right has come out against these bills. To quote directly from our policy briefing memo that's been shared with all of us, "Not only does the disparate monitoring of some people and not others violate equal protection under the 14th Amendment or the first Article 1, Section 7 of the Washington Constitution, we are continuing to disproportionately harm communities overrepresented in our criminal legal system. These cameras and harms signal that these are dangerous zones that need to be policed and surveilled closely. This does not signal to our community that government has their back. It tells them that we are watching them, and that these are already marginalized queer communities, black and brown neighborhoods, and immigrants and refugees who are already living at the edge, and we're saying that we view them as groups that need to be watched." And we all just witnessed public comment. We've gotten over 1,000 emails this week. The community we all serve seems unequivocally opposed to these ordinances and expanding surveillance, so are we going to listen to the people that we serve? I do not look forward to the day where we have to sit back up here on this dais and deal with the aftermath of our data being handed over to other actors. I do not want to be sitting up here in the future telling people, "I'm sorry, we put your community in danger," when we could have stopped it today. It is a matter of when, not if, our data will be handed over to the federal government and other actors. So colleagues, I urge you, for these reasons, to think of your neighbors, think of your community, and to think if you yourself would want to live with a camera and fridging on your civil liberties. And for these reasons, and to serve the people of Seattle, I will be voting no on this legislation. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Council. Order in the House. This is disruptive behavior. I'm just trying to get to this meeting. Councilmember Hollingsworth, please go ahead.
Thank you, Council President Nelson. Thank you for that, Councilmember Rink. I don't want to just, like, jump into my comments without recognizing those powerful words and what you said, so thank you for that. I also want to thank Councilmember Kettle. I appreciate, I really appreciate your engagement on this, even though sometimes we don't agree, we can agree to disagree, but I really appreciate your engagement on this and trying to listen to folks as well. I know that we are in challenging times in our city, and for me, when I think of public safety, it's not an or, it's an and. I've had the honor and opportunity, but also the responsibility, to answer to people, you all, every single day, from emails, comments, phone calls, in person... all, every single day, from emails, comments, phone calls, in person. I have to respond to people and these issues from our community and talk to people every day. I've also had the intimate connection and close to people that have been affected by violence and crime in our city, from people who have lost loved ones, people's windows that have been blown out, daycare shot up, families that have been hurt. Every single day, I have to talk to these people and deal with their trauma with them and comfort them every single day. And it's my job to help keep them safe. I've always supported everything, all the investments that people had talked about today that they said are important to keep our community safe, from food access to after-school programs, our care team, social worker, human services, community reinvestment that came from the state through cannabis, social equity, arts programs, diversion programs. My whole line has been, "we can invest $1,500 today in our youth, or we're going to be investing $40,000 for Echo Glen." That has been my line all the time about our youth. And I've always used my platform for these resources as well. I didn't need to run for office to show up for community. I've been doing that since day one, and that's really important to me, to make sure that I do that. My interactions have always been to help people, and I believe that we have some safeguards in place with the amendments that have been placed, that have been voted on. And also, too, this is really hard, this is really difficult, as my intentions personally are to try to figure out different avenues and tools in our, in our community to make sure that we have a balanced approach, that I'm listening to people that have not shown up here, that I've talked to every single day, that I just talked to this morning, to some of the minority-owned businesses that are on 23rd and Jackson, and some of the parents that are at Washington School or Garfield School or different places that might have a different opinion than people that showed up today, that might have a different opinion than people I've sent emails. That is my job to be able to engage with community and find a delicate balance. And that's why I supported this in committee, and I'm also going to be supporting it today and making sure that I use my position that while this technology is being implemented, that we're doing everything in our power to make sure that it's not misused. And we can also, and I know someone just laughed there, I'm really serious about that when I say it. You can laugh if you want to, that's fine, but I'm serious when I've taken this oath to make sure that I protect people from day one, because I literally have to answer to the people that have lost families and loved ones, and they're texting me in the middle of the night on their trauma because they can't afford groceries, because they can't be able to take their kids to schools, or I go to their funerals. I literally have to answer to those people. And I do believe that this could be a tool and technology to help with investigation for our city in certain areas that we see a rise in certain crime and activities in our city. So that is my position. I know some people here don't agree with that, but that's where I'm coming from, because at the end of the day, I have to respond and be responsible for people in our district. So I will be voting yes on this legislation, and thank you.
Thank you for those comments. I appreciate your perspective. I would, I won't repeat a lot of the things that were already said. I will be supporting this legislation. I do want to just comment on the, okay. I want to comment on the, the fact that we have in the, we extended the, we actually added and expanded to the care department before the, before we got the evaluation project, I mean, the evaluation report, which was due at the end of this year because of the results of the, of what we were seeing on the street. And so it is not unprecedented to go ahead and expand a program before the end of the pilot program or before we have received the, the plan for evaluation. Councilmember Saka.
Thank you, Madam Council President. And first off, I want to take the time to thank the members of the public who took the time to show up and testify, provide comment today, those who have submitted email, comments, and feedback over the last few weeks, really few months, since this proposal was originally transmitted and has been gone through our committee review process to get us to this point. I also want to take the moment for, for just a bit to thank the Community Police Commission for their terrific work and for meeting with my office to discuss their feedback and specific concerns. Thank you to the CPC for being such a good advocate for many communities across the city of Seattle. Also, I want to thank the Office of Civil Rights for their engagement and for their advocacy as well. Community voice is needed now more than ever as we face unprecedented attacks on our freedom and values from the Trump administration, including attempts to militarize our cities and weaponize our immigration system against our friends and neighbors in the immigrant and refugee community. As someone who is the proud son of a Nigerian immigrant, someone who has went to Title 13 different K through 12 Title I schools growing up, all of them, for kids like myself at the time, from disadvantaged backgrounds, socioeconomically, tons of immigrant refugees. This is an issue that's near and dear to me. Balancing the many needs, we're hearing valid concerns, valid feedback from members of the public today and over the past few months. To Councilmember Hollingsworth's point, we're also hearing concerns and feedback from members of the public that want assistance and want better action against property crime and violent crime. We need to hold individuals accountable for that. So balancing these competing needs is very important. I happen to represent South Park, a community and neighborhood with a very, obviously a very high Latino population, Hispanic population. They are very concerned about ICE right now and immigration enforcement. I also represent neighborhoods like High Point, another community that has a high concentration of immigrant refugees, mostly from East Africa, many of which are also concerned about aggressive immigration enforcement by the Trump administration right now. These are very valid concerns. This is not easy stuff that we're called upon now to, to make decisions. So thank you, colleagues, as well. I think the amended bill before us responds to many, not all, of the valid concerns that we're hearing. And we've seen various councilmembers propose ideas because they care. We've seen us take positions and attempt to step outside of our comfort zones, representing our constituents' best interests, trying to govern from a majoritarian perspective because these are valid concerns that we're hearing. So I want to thank my colleagues for all the work that got us to this point. Here we are. That said, I will be supporting this legislation today. I believe this pilot program provides our city a needed public safety tool with strong data and privacy protections, and it reflects a very limited, narrow deployment in the context of a pilot project in narrowly-defined geographic areas with clear, strict parameters that we've set out, not only set out and defined in the context of these current conversations and deliberations about this proposal, but also prior related technologies. Earlier last year, when we originally authorized the serve for CCTV, or this year, you know, I'm proud to have been able, one of the architects of baking in strong privacy and security safeguards and ensuring that, under no circumstances, we will be sharing this information for those seeking gender-affirming care, those seeking reproductive care, immigration, or for immigration enforcement purposes. And because of some of that earlier work, those, some of those same safeguards are baked into the base proposal that we're, that we're seeing today. And now we went through the process of amending it and, in my view, making it even better. And so this is, to Councilmember Solomon's earlier point, this is not, CCTV is not principally a crime prevention tool. I think we, we can all acknowledge that, or at least I do. It's not a crime prevention tool, at least principally, but it is, and it can be, an important crime-fighting tool. And it can also be a helpful investigative tool. Because we hear concerns from residents tired of property crime, tired of having their homes shot up, tired of theft. This legislation and the process for which we provide oversight for our various executive departments reflects Seattle's values of collaboration and looking out for one another. Our city is expressly prohibited from using tools like this as a means to work with agencies like ICE, and will, our city will limit its use as a tool to keep everyone in our community safe, and this tool is for SPD in this case. And I'm confident, I too share the confidence, and Seattle Police Chief Sean Barnes, to make sure that the robust, comprehensive protections baked into this legislation are faithfully and steadfastly executed, steadfastly, probably not a word, but faithfully executed and enforced and implemented, including the piece about pausing. Thank you, Councilmember, Councilmembers Rink and Kettle for the, including your amendment to allow us to pause if we receive any of those subpoenas or any mechanisms indicating that this, this, we're, we're being requested by federal agencies for immigration purposes. This bill is better because of the, your efforts and your leadership. As a former practicing technology attorney, data protection lawyer, and someone who just geeks out about technology generally, I think that this limited use and deployment of technology in Seattle is important, especially as amended. For me personally, if I sense in any way that this pilot program is being used improperly or not in accordance with the strict guardrails that we laid out as part of the amendment process, I will be among the first to call for its immediate cessation. Also, as a city councilmember and vice chair of our city's Public Safety Committee, I take my role and responsibility for oversight very seriously, and I commit to ensuring that this technology is used by our police department properly and is not a coercive tool of weaponization by actors in the other Washington. Finally, I want to thank the mayor's office, Public Safety Committee Chair Kettle, and our own central staff, experts, for their diligent analysis on this topic, and in the case of the mayor's office and Chair Kettle, your leadership. This is not the end-all, be-all. This is not going to solve all of our problems, but it will help investigate some crime. And I, for those reasons, I will be supporting it today. Thank you.
Councilmember Juarez.
Thank you. I'm going to want to start first, I'll try to be brief, but there are a lot of, a lot of things to say. I won't say everything because a lot of my colleagues have said that. I really appreciate those of you that showed up here today. And Councilmember Rink, you're correct, there was 105. So I was keeping track, too. Yes, no, yes, no. I've been on this dais long enough to know when groups come out and people are organized to come out, but that doesn't mean because certain people didn't come out that we don't have people out there that are supportive of this. I will be supporting this, and I'll tell you why. First of all, there are a lot of misinformation here today. I don't know how everyone got their information, but I want to tell you what I looked at. I had an opportunity, being a member of the Public Safety Committee meeting, where we voted this out of committee and read the material. I did read the Office of Civil Rights Policy Briefing Memo. Thank you, Director Wheeler-Smith. And I looked at the three articles in the YouTube that was presented. I want to thank the Seattle Community Police Commission. I read their letter, and again, that was on September 4th, and I read Chief Sean Barnes' response dated September 8th to the Community Police Commission in response to their September 4th letter. And then, of course, yesterday, we got five new amendments that were introduced, and we were briefed on them yesterday, and I had a chance to sit down and talk with some folks about all of that and what we've heard. Now, I've been on council, and I've heard from community forever about these type of issues, whether we were talking about camera vests and dash cams and surveillance, ShotSpotter. I've seen it all, I've heard it all. Before I go any further, on a personal note, I want to thank Councilmember Solomon for his words and his subject matter expertise, and the fact that it's pretty obvious when you have Councilmember Solomon, you have Councilwoman Hollingsworth, you have Councilmember Saka, and myself, all of, as you call us now, of color, BIPOC, I guess that's what you're calling us now. I just want to say this and just be honest with you. Councilwoman Hollingsworth, I know it was hard for you to make the decision you made, and you and I have had long talks about race, politics, violence. We've also had long talks about rights and responsibilities, privilege and accountability. And I know that it wasn't easy for you today to do what you did, and I want to commend you and thank you, because you are an up-and-coming leader, and I so appreciate that. I want to keep going here. So our community, my community, has been in danger, has been targeted, hunted, enslaved, beaten, subject to genocide since the beginning of this country. So maybe some of you feel differently about a data breach. I'll tell you what I feel about. I am working and dealing with death, gun violence, violent crime, incarceration, racial inequity, racial targeting in our communities. Every single day, it's a political act, and I learned this from Councilmember Hollingsworth, to get up and be a woman of color at 65 to walk through this world and deal with what we dealt with. And you know, it was really hard for me to sit here and some of you with some privilege, I'm just going to say it. I never grew up with that. As a enrolled member of the Blackfeet Nation, as a Latina first generation, I don't get to check out. I walk in the door brown, I leave brown. I'm targeted, and we've dealt with that, and we're still here. So for me to support this, and again, I have to say this again, our communities have not had the luxury of not calling 911. Our babies are being shot. Our children are being killed. Our young men are being targeted based on the color of their skin. Now, yes, I appreciate your passion. You got up here, you cried, you screamed. We got death, we got threats again, and I wrote them down. Five. One regarding a gun. Four to our personals, because we're doing our job. Now, I thank you that you're all allies and you care about us. I guess we're BIPOC now, thank you. But at the end of the day, I don't have the luxury that many of you have. My daughters don't have that luxury. My brother, my sisters, my cousins, Councilmember Hollingsworth, Sol, and Saka, their neighborhoods where we grew up, where we walked as people of color and dealt with this. So I'm not worried about a data breach. I'm worried that this legislation and the amendments that came to tighten it up, and the voices you heard in committee and then some, to make it right. It's a pilot program, and as Councilmember Solomon said, it is an investigative tool. No one ever said that a camera stops violence. And you can go on and on about the Trump regime. We all watch the news. We get it, we know. I'm not going to go with fear. I'm going to go with facts. I'm going to go with subject matter expertise, and I'm going to go with wisdom and knowledge and respect for humanity and everybody in this room. And so for those of you, I hope you can be respectful to me the way I've been to you to listen to you for over three hours. And when I've been up on this dais for eight years and I've had to witness some interesting behavior, it comes with a lot of goddamn privilege, and I'm tired of it. So I will be supporting this bill today. Thank you, Council President.
Councilmember Rivera.
Thank you, Council President. I want to thank my colleagues for all their comments, because these are really hard decisions that we have to, that we make on a regular basis, and especially today. I want to say that we all agree about the egregious tactics of the, excuse me. I want to say that we all agree about the egregious tactics of the, excuse me, we all agree about these egregious tactics of the Trump administration. And even before this administration, when we passed the original legislation, we were concerned about its potential unintended consequences, consequences, which is why I said earlier, we put guardrails in place in ALPR, the original CCT, CCTV at the time. And now for this expansion that we're taking up to address the public safety issues being experienced across the city. What about those residents dealing with fired shots in their neighborhoods that we hear from on a regular basis, on a daily basis? What about our small businesses, many of which are from communities of color, immigrants and LGBTQIA+ who are experiencing self-public safety issues when they're just trying to make ends meet? What about those parents whose kids have been murdered or injured and whose crimes have not been solved yet? Just this weekend alone, a 17-year-old was shot in my district at Cowan Park and to my knowledge, no arrests have been made. Now, I understand these cameras are not going to be at Cowan Park, but these cameras are going to be in places where we've heard public safety and these crimes are happening. To me, this is a crime solving tool. I'm glad to know that this video is automatically deleted after five days unless it is being pulled for a crime in the city. That's another guardrail. As a Latina woman who grew up in the inner city and as a mother whose kids and their peers were involved as a school shooting, and as someone who did know your rights education after September 11th, an anniversary we're going to be acknowledging in two days, when immigrants were being targeted, I did know your rights education for the ACLU. I can tell you, I take this very seriously and I do not need to be told that I do not understand. I am so glad you're passionate, you hear I'm passionate too. And we can agree to disagree on certain things, but we need to respect each other. And like Councilmember Juarez, I sat here for three hours listening to everyone respectfully because I care. I care, though you may not believe it, what you have to say. And I also care about the phone calls and all the emails that we got and the conversations in community. So I will be supporting this legislation and this will not be the end of this legislation because there will be a evaluation of this legislation. And we're going to continue to work with our partners at the Community Police Commission, the OIG and others to make sure that if we continue to use this, we are doing it right and it doesn't have the unintended consequence. But we are trying to use these tools, especially at a time when we're still understaffed at SPD. So this cannot be an all or nothing. We have to work together. We have to agree to disagree on some things and we will continue to work on this together. And I don't want folks to check out because you didn't get the results that you didn't want. We need to continue to work together because that's how we beat back this administration. They want us to be divided and we cannot do that. You can if you want to, it's your right, but I don't want to. So you can disagree with my vote today and I still want to work with you Timothy and I'm glad you came here today and I always appreciate our conversations and I respect you. So I will be voting on this today and I do thank all of you for being here today. Thank you, Council President.
Okay, thank you.
I'm not seeing any other comments, so you're welcome to have the last word.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, colleagues, for your comments and from where they come from. I think it's really important to hear it. Quickly, I just wanted to say, no comments were made related to ALPR. There's only 42 people that have access to ALPR. A third are from OIG, a third are from the Intel Investigators Group and a third are from the Real Time Crime Center. And when they access ALPR data, they have to enter the associated SPD case number as well as a brief statement of probable cause or reasonable suspension, suspicion for the vehicle and the involvement in a crime. I hear again and again, again, the various pieces about other jurisdictions. We keep addressing them on a regular basis. By the way, there's not 400 cameras within the CCTV program. I just also wanted to add, and I really appreciate, and CPC is here and the CPC knows that I'm like their strongest backer, but at the same time, I have to note that when it says community members are overwhelmingly against expansion, well, that's quite clear because we do our own outreach. And you know, as noted too, you know, the expansion increases mistrust of the city and SPD. What also increases mistrust of Seattle and SPD is the inability to drill with our public safety challenges to the ability that we can. And I would also say that, you know, the city has not fulfilled its promises to listen and protect community, which, which overwhelmingly opposes surveillance. As you've heard, I hear day in and day out, day in and day out. So I make that promise, I carry through on that promise. And for the Office of Civil Rights, we follow, as stated in the executive summary, to balance potential criminal legal system benefits with strong protections for civil rights and liberties and safeguards against disparate impacts on racially and socially economically marginalized communities. I realize that we are a country in crisis, a crisis in democracy, something that I've seen around the world again and again and again. 2003, 2004, I was in Baghdad thinking, how lucky are we as a country to have our founding fathers, our constitution and our institutions? I don't say that anymore. Our federal government has taken on an authoritarian nature and approach that parallels strikingly similar other examples from history. And I also recognize, and I hear you about the tie to our situation here in Seattle, and I've heard and read the connections made by many to council bills 121052 and 121053. I understand the points and I also know though, the efforts made in these two bills to protect our city and to create a safe base. These bills incorporate the Seattle Way. Separately, and this is important for me to say, I wanted to note that I have spoken to the issues of federal law enforcement, National Guard deployments in committee during chair comment and with a statement released last week. You know, it's about professionalism. It's about professionalism. It's about having the high standard and we do that. When I went through that entire list, SPD does not use face coverings. They have to announce themselves, they have to identify themselves, things that are not happening with federal law enforcement. And also the military is for America's defense. It's not for partisan and political deployments that are performative. You know, the National Guard, we do not need the National Guard here in Seattle. You know, the Navy sent me to the Army's Commandant General Staff College. We don't need them. I don't need some planner in the National Guard Bureau and the Pentagon. We do not need that. What we do need is ATF, DEA, FBI to stem the flow of guns and drugs up the I-5 corridor. What we need is a program to aid in inbounding sworn officers in SPD or equipment for the Seattle Fire Department. And importantly tied to that is support FEMA. We don't need the National Guard. We do not need what the federal government is promising. That is what we need. And so I also recognize the risk that we're talking about here, but a risk mitigated based on our Seattle-based CCTV and RTCC bills and ALPR too, that incorporate the Seattle Way, the Seattle values. And the amendment from today further adds to these protections. So lastly, we have a charter responsibility to provide public safety to our city. Over the past decade, we have failed in that responsibility to provide that safety. We have made that connection. Our technology bills such as ALPR, CCTV and Real Time Crime Center in '24 and are making an impact in '25. I'm already seeing data. I'm already seeing data on these bills because I've been out to the precincts, I've talked to sergeants, I've talked to lieutenants and on these pieces as evidence with what happened in CID just within the last 24 hours. And council bills 121052 and 121053 will further aid us in the Seattle Way to fulfill our duties and our responsibilities. So colleagues, I ask for your support in this bill, both bills to be frank. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. I am not seeing any further comments, so would the, so will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the amended bill?
Councilmember Kettle.
Aye.
Councilmember Rink.
No.
Councilmember Rivera.
Aye.
Councilmember Saka.
Aye.
Councilmember Solomon.
Aye.
Councilmember Strauss.
Aye.
Councilmember Hollingsworth.
Yes.
Councilmember Juarez.
Aye.
Council President Nelson.
Aye.
Seven in favor, two opposed.
Thank you very much. The bill, the bill passes as amended and the chair will sign it. Will the clerk please affix my signature to the legislation on my behalf? And will the clerk please read item three into the record?
Agenda item three, Council Bill 121053 relating to surveillance technology implementation, authorizing approval of uses and accepting the 2025 updated surveillance impact report and 2025 executive overview for the Seattle Police Department's use of Real Time Crime Center software. The committee recommends the bill pass.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Kettle, as chair of the committee, you're recognized in order to provide the committee report.
Thank you, Council President. And in the interest of everybody's time and the fact that this bill is basically paired with Council Bill 121053, colleagues, we've gone through all the various points that relate to RTCC and the CCTV. With all the discussion that we've had, all the points that were made, I ask for your support in passing this bill. Thank you.
Are there any comments? I'm not seeing any comments on, not seeing any hands up here. I would, I would like to add just an observation here. STOT currently operates 145 traffic cameras across our city and these are publicly accessible to anyone in the world 24 hours a day on STOT's website. STOT fully controls the cameras and they are a critical tool in managing traffic in the city. Private citizens and insurance companies use software to constantly record all 145 camera, camera feeds live. And those recordings get uploaded onto YouTube, Instagram, TikTok, et cetera, in compilations of car crashes caught on camera. Insurance companies use those recordings in their investigations to determine fault in automotive crashes. And so as it stands, the, actually the resolution in these cameras is not very clear, not clear enough to make out individual faces, but it can identify specific vehicles. So what I'm trying to say is that we have, that the, the footage of, of these STOT cameras is already being widely used for other purposes and it's actually being privatized. And so that has, to me, that's important context as we look into this legislation. And because it's, it's simply already available footage that, that will be used in, it's used by pretty much everybody except for the police department at this point. I've had the occasion to go to various cities in the, in the country, but last fall went to Washington DC, very progressive city, and visited their Real Time Crime Center, they call it something different, but that, that has 44,000 private feeds of, of video going into it from, from roads and also businesses and residents, et cetera. So what we are, to me, what this is all about is using every single tool in our toolbox to help keep our, our residents and our businesses safer, availing ourselves of technology that is in use in progressive cities across the country. So I just wanted to thank you very much for bringing this forward and invite other comments or you'd have the last word before we go ahead and take a vote.
Again, colleagues, we've discussed this in depth and I ask for your support. Thank you.
Will the clerk please call the roll on the passage of the bill?
Councilmember Kettle.
Aye.
Aye.
And Q, Councilmember Rink.
No.
Councilmember Rivera.
Aye.
Councilmember Saka.
Aye.
Councilmember Solomon.
Aye.
Councilmember Strauss.
No.
Councilmember Hollingsworth.
Yes.
Councilmember Juarez.
Aye.
Council President Nelson.
Aye.
Seven in favor, two opposed.
The bill passes and the chair will sign it. Will the clerk please affix my signature to the legislation on my behalf? All right. Will the, will the clerk please read item four into the record?
The report of the Finance, Native Communities and Tribal Governments Committee, agenda item four, Council Bill 121046 relating to public works contracts, amending provisions of the small works roster and contractor bond processes to align with state law. The committee recommends that the bill pass.
Councilmember Strauss, as chair of the committee, you're recognized to provide the committee report.
Thank you, Council President. Council President, point of personal privilege or information, not really sure which one. I would be interested in holding the remaining bills until next week's full council meeting scene is where at 6:30 and you'd mentioned you have a colleague with a hard stop at seven.
I recognize that and we will go as far as we can until, this is on, I believe that my, my staff has tried to get in touch with your staff to find out if this has to happen today. That was not possible, so I'm going to go ahead and continue with this particular bill and.
Council President, please do not impugn the motives of myself or my staff. We know that my staff has talked to the city clerk, the deputy city clerk.
We have a half an hour until, I, I hear you. And there are three or four council members who will not be here in, on the following Tuesday. It is my intention to go through and get as much done as we possibly can. There are three more items on today's agenda and we will end in time for our colleague to be able to leave on time. Thank you.
Thank you. The bill before us is Council Bill 121046, which allows the City of Seattle to engage in the small works roster that is provided by the state rather than having businesses required to sign up for many small works rosters. This allows for one, it is an allowance, not a requirement and a good idea. I urge your yes vote. Thank you.
Are there any comments? Okay, will the clerk please call the roll on the passage of the bill?
Councilmember Kettle.
Aye.
Councilmember Rink.
Yes.
Councilmember Rivera.
Aye.
Councilmember Saka.
Aye.
Councilmember Solomon.
Aye.
Councilmember Strauss.
Yes.
Councilmember Hollingsworth.
Yes.
Councilmember Juarez.
Aye.
Council President Nelson.
Aye.
Nine in favor, none opposed.
The bill passes and the chair will sign it. Will the clerk please affix my signature to the legislation on my behalf? And will the clerk please read item five into the record?
The report of the Land Use Committee, agenda item five, Council Bill 121049 relating to land use and zoning, amending chapter 23.32 of the Seattle municipal code at page eight of the official land use map to rezone land in the Lake City neighborhood. The committee recommends the bill pass.
Councilmember Solomon, as chair of the committee, you're recognized in order to provide the committee report.
Thank you very much, Council President. I will actually yield my time to Councilmember Juarez to address this particular piece of legislation after she chews.
Thank you, Councilmember Solomon. I am so embarrassed, I'm so sorry. I was eating a piece of candy, but okay, this is embarrassing. So I've said this before and I'll be very, very brief. Again, Lake City Community Center, 10 years in the making, over 10 years in the making, first in Seattle to develop Housing and Web of Community Center. Six city departments all worked together in the last 10 years. Office of Housing, Seattle Parks and Rec, Department of Neighborhoods, OPCD, FAS and Seattle Public Libraries. The two bottom floors will be a community center, workout room, gym, and we have a childcare facility and we're really excited about that. The most, the best part about this, 113 new affordable homes above the community center. And these are large homes, they're not one-bedroom condos. These are large homes, two, three and four bedrooms to serve working families. The homes will be affordable with the average income at 50 AMI. So that is very exciting for us. We're going to work with Childcare, Family Works, and they will provide programming and childcare. And Mercy Housing will be the housing provider. Construction is supposed to start in 2027, but I'm hoping we can move dirt a lot faster because we need that housing across the city and certainly in D5. This is part of the hub urban village in the heart of Lake City with the library and the farmer's market right next door. As you know, D5 is right between three state highways. We have a rich transit spine. We have connections, we have two light rail stations. We're incredibly excited about this. Thank you for the community organizations that supported and worked with us this last 10 years. Big shout out to Mercy Housing Northwest, Family Works, Akin and the Hunger Intervention Program and the 16 letters of support from community, community members and leaders. We are committed to Lake City, that it will not become a ghost town and will continue to work on housing, public safety and all those things that we want to make a city great. With that, I yield, or I don't have to yield, I'm just, I'm done. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Solomon.
All right. I am not seeing any hands raised, so will the clerk please call the roll on the passage of the bill?
Councilmember Kettle.
Aye.
Councilmember Rink.
Yes.
Councilmember Rivera.
Aye.
Councilmember Saka.
Aye.
to address errant golf ball trespasses associated with restored tee locations. As proposed, the project requires the City Council approval under Seattle Municipal Code 23.76.064, which also authorizes the Council to modify development standards for city facilities. Seattle Parks requests a waiver of the development standards to allow the poles and netting to exceed the height limit. The Department of Construction and Inspections reviewed the proposal and issued its analysis and recommendations on July 31, 2025, and the SDCI recommends approval of the project. On September 3, 2025, the Land Use Committee was briefed on the project, held a public hearing, and made recommendations to the Council to grant the modification of development standards as conditions on the clerk file. I will also add that at that meeting, there were some requests for consideration made of the Department of Parks and Recreation, one of which is to look at the maximum height of the netting to be consistent with the height of the netting at the driving range at the Bill Wright Golf Complex as well as tree preservation, in addition to grounds maintenance to remove the blackberries that are encroaching on the 24th Avenue side to actually make that course more playable, if you will. So those requests were made at committee, and the recommendation from the committee is for approval and adoption of, of Council File 314536.
Okay. Thank you for that report. Are there any questions or comments? All right. Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll on the granting of the clerk file as conditioned?
Councilmember Kettle.
Aye.
Councilmember Rink.
Yes.
Councilmember Rivera.
Aye.
Councilmember Saka.
Aye.
Councilmember Solomon.
Aye.
Councilmember Strauss.
Yes.
Councilmember Hollingsworth.
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Juarez.
Aye.
Council President Nelson.
Aye.
Nine in favor, none opposed.
The clerk file is granted as conditioned, and the chair will sign the findings, conclusions, and decisions of the council. Will the clerk please affix my signature to the findings, conclusions, and decisions on my behalf? All right. There were no items removed from the consent calendar, and there's not a resolution for introduction and adoption today. So colleagues, I just have to say that the, we did it. We got through all of the items on our agenda. Thank you very much for sticking with us. If there is no objection, Councilmember Hollingsworth, September 9 excused absence will be rescinded. Okay. Hearing no objection. Councilmember, Councilmember Hollingsworth, September 9 excused absence is now rescinded because she is here. Is there any further business to come before the council? All right. Seeing none, we've reached the end of today's agenda. The next council meeting is scheduled on September 16 at 2:00 p.m. It is now 6:37. Thanks, everybody, for sticking with us. Hearing no further business, we're adjourned.